Welcome to the May 13 Makin County Board of Commission meeting. Maybe everybody scooted over just a little bit. There's some standing outside. Make a little room. We're gonna try to, try to stay down here. Thank you. I see some ladies over here standing. Yes, some of you men. All right. All right. Welcome again tonight. And tonight's a very important meeting for our new county manager. It's the Super Bowl. Okay.
Testing, one, two, three.
So we have brand-new microphones and we're trying to adjust, so I'm gonna speak right into it. All right. Tonight is the Super Bowl for our county manager, and he's our new county manager. It's our, it's our budget presentation, and so we're excited. All right. Let's start with Ms. Tammy. Any announcements?
Yes, sir. I would just like to announce that on June the 10th, at our regular meeting at 6:00, we will have our public hearing on the budget.
All right. June the 10th is the budget public hearing. Mr. Cade?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention to the folks that are out there, I know there's a lot of folks that are interested in debris removal. Obviously, it's still ongoing, but that's set to wrap up on June the 1st. And we've, we've learned a lot in the process, so there's some things that we'll know next time. To manage maybe this a little bit differently next time, and, but we are gonna be wrapping up fairly shortly. There's nothing set to be taken out north of the Isle Bridge. And there's actually no points that have been approved by the Corps between the dam and Isle Bridge. So just to make folks aware of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Breeden?
I would just like to say that I know that it's kind of popped back up with the library issues with Jackson County. And I don't know what's going on over there, but I would just like to go on the record again as saying I'm not interested in pulling out of the FRL. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't think that's something we're interested in doing as a board either.
Commissioner Antoine?
Well, Commissioner Breeden, I was actually getting ready to address the same thing. So I think this is the third meeting in a row that we're addressing that we have no intentions of pulling out of FRL. We signed a contract, and that's not, that's not our intention at all. I think in light of the recent developments in Jackson County, I'd like to say we have no control over what other counties do. If they decide to do something like pull out, that's a Jackson County or Swain County issue. That's not a Makin County issue. If that does happen, we may have to revisit this and try to figure out how to make sure that we're moving forward. Because our intention is to make sure that our library stays open, resources stay available. Because I understand how important this is. I have a lot of karate kids at my karate school, and they let me know they want, what they want, and the library is something that they want. So there's no way possible that I'm gonna let that close. If even if something were to go south, the number-one priority is figuring out how to make sure that the library stays open and we get to move forward in a good way. So I just want to make that announcement for everyone here. We're here to serve our county. We're here to serve all of you, so in the best way that we possibly can. So, thank you.
You know, I'd like to briefly reiterate what Mr. Cade said. You know, we hired, I say hired, we opted to go with Army Corps of Engineers to help with our waterways. Because they wrote the book on more or less a lot of our, our clean water, and they're the authority. And so I think we have a lesson learned here. And I think, as Mr. Cade said, you know, this, this is about to wrap up. I think we're all a little frustrated. Some of the worst part of the rivers haven't been cleaned up yet. So just to kind of reiterate right here, lesson learned. In the future, when this happens, you know, I think we're gonna take a more calculated look at this and have some more local authority with some local oversight. I think that's one of the big issues, is having vested people from the community overlook these creeks. And there's a lot of people here very passionate about that, and thanks for coming tonight in person to stand up for that. All right. And one more light point of order. We have a meeting, Mr. Sherrill and I, tomorrow morning at the Town Hall. It's, it's not a public meeting, but to discuss fireworks back in the park. So a lot of planning's going into that, and we're all really excited about kind of bringing back, you know, the old nostalgic feel of the fireworks in the park this 4th of July. So, so that's a positive. Mr. Shields?
To go along with what the chairman said, we're looking at a lot of historic pieces right now pertaining to our water quality and those type of things. And I appreciate meeting with some of the people, and they shared their ideas. And at a point in time, I'd like for the, for the commissioners to look at the Water Quality Advisory Committee to see how that is. When I was chairman in December '24, that was a conversation piece of that group. I believe it was nine on that committee, experts, and to help us, as we say, go through some of this debris. Or when you try to do things and you don't know what you're doing, you need help. And I, I think the, looking at the past history and information that I have now, the Water Quality Advisor Committee is something that, that I'd like to come back later and talk to the board about. And the, and the duties of that group and the expertise that they have that Gary Shields doesn't have. And so I, I appreciate when that comes up again. We'll, we'll work through some things. I want to say thank you. Again, thank you for being here.
Mr. Sherrill?
This morning, I attended a recreation committee meeting, and we had a concert over there that was a fundraiser for the Pregnancy Center. What, two weekends ago?
Last weekend.
Last weekend. The weather didn't cooperate with us very well, but it was an eye-opener on the future of the amphitheater that we have started creating at the Makin County Rec Park. Like I said, they raised a lot of money for the Pregnancy Center. The people that were out there seemed to have a good time. Hopefully, this is something that we're gonna build on in the future. Not necessarily nationally-known artists, but small hometown performers out there at the park to give the citizens of Makin County a place to go for entertainment and stuff like that. And as Chairman mentioned, that's something that we've been fighting for, or not fighting for, but really our desire to get the fireworks back in the park. And, and it's coming. Also, the pickleball, the 20 pickleball courts, we're waiting on one engineer for the changes that we made out there. And it's my understanding that the tennis courts are almost ready to start being torn out and constructed. There's a lot of great movement in that park, and as I said before, I have, I grew up in that park. And it's sort of like it's gone dormant. And Chairman Young and I have really spent a lot of time with, with the Rec Commission trying to get new life to that park. And I think we're well on our way to a great park out there. So.
Thank you. Ms. Laurie? Mr. Counsel? Before I wrap up our announcements right here, does any board member have any interest in pulling out or withdrawing from Fontana Regional Library?
Chairman, if I may, I have no desire for Makin County to be back in library business. But as a, as a sitting commissioner, some of the things that we have fought in the library, I'm not willing to let those activities come back to the library. That library needs to be neutral. It does not need to promote any sexuality for anyone. It does not need to have feminine products in the men's restroom or the boys' restroom. And, you know, we just got an American Pope, the first one. And I read about what the American, the Pope, the new Pope Leo stands for. And he references the twisted-up stuff in the Western part of the world, and it's us. We should not be promoting any sexual ideology on any youth. We should not, I mean, that's a, that should be a safe haven for anyone. And I will tell you something else. I have gay friends. I have gay clients. I have a distant family member that's child is a transgender. I hate no one. But if I don't want my grandkids to be, or my kids, or anyone else focusing and walking through the doors and seeing what was, what actually started this library issue to start with, then it should not be there. Go in, do your job, let people decide what they want to read, and don't put these, just be neutral.
All right, Mr. Sherrill. We'll keep us going right here. Okay. All right. Mr. Shields, can you help us with a moment of silence and our Pledge of Allegiance?
If you can stand, please stand for a moment of silence, or you can see it. For a moment of silence.
All right.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Shields. We have no public hearing tonight. Any additions to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Now, Ms. Tammy, have you got the public comment sheet?
Sure. Just to kind of reiterate the public comment, we, we kind of altered the rules a few meetings ago. And we have a three-minute-per-person time limit with a 45-minute total time period. So I want to try to get as many speakers in here as we can. All right? Our first person, Jason Love.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me all right? First, I want to thank Mr. Cade, Chairman Young, Commissioner Shields for those words at the beginning regarding the debris removal. I really appreciate that, and I think a lot of us in the room appreciate hearing that from y'all. So I'm gonna use my, rest my time to talk about the debris removal. So like many of you, I was caught off guard by the scale and scope of this work. I expected a more targeted approach, especially in rivers like the Little T in Colosseia, which were not significantly affected by flooding from Helene. I assumed cleanup would be limited to places with visible hazards like the log jam and crushed motorboat across from Walmart on the Colosseia. It made sense for counties to opt into debris removal. In many places to the east of us, rivers were devastated, filled with destroyed homes, cars, and other large debris. Even in Makin County, there were a few areas that needed attention. But what we are seeing isn't careful cleanup, it's widespread clearing that is terribly destructive. Out-of-state contractors, likely well-intentioned, are removing vast quantities of wood, in part because they're paid by the cubic yard. This downwood is not trash. It's essential habitat. It slows water, creates calm backwater areas, provides shelter for brown trout, smallmouth bass, wood ducks, and blue-winged teal. It's home and food for aquatic insects. In many cases, this wood armored stream banks from erosion. Like logs in a forest, wood in a river is a natural and vital part of the ecosystem. Numerous studies show that more wood equals more fish. There are times when a removal is necessary, wood caught on bridge pilings or huge log jams that threaten infrastructure. But much of the material being removed from our rivers is legacy wood that predates Helene and has weathered many seasons. This kind of habitat should be left alone. Even more troubling is the cutting of live trees. Trees are being removed for having a few dead limbs or simply because they lean over the river. This ignores the role trees play in stabilizing stream banks. Species like ironwood have deep root systems that keep banks intact even when leaning. These trees also provide vital shade, keeping water temperatures cooler, which is essential for mountain fish species. A recent 2024 study found that large-scale wood removal, like what's happening here in Makin County, has little impact on flood reduction. The only beneficial removal was in case where wood was obstructing bridges or forming dangerous jams. Otherwise, the effort was deemed a poor use of money and ecologically damaging. Instead of extensive wood removal, the study recommends designing and building infrastructures like bridges that can withstand large flood events, reconnecting channelized rivers to their floodplains, and using funds for voluntary buyouts of structures and properties in the riskiest flood-prone areas. If we truly want to protect our rivers and communities, we must narrow the scope of debris removal. We need to remember that our rivers are more than just conduits for, for moving water, but arteries of life. And for the audience, if you agree with what I just said, would you please stand up? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Zach, Zach Talent?
So I'll start just by reiterating what Mr. Love said. Thank you for your comments at the beginning. It, it's nice to be heard. So for those of you that, that don't know who I am, my name's Zach Talent. I'm a lifelong resident, angler, and educator in Makin County. I spent my life in the Little Tennessee River and its tributaries, and now spend an equal amount of time as an educator who is committed to fostering ecological understanding and stewardship in our youth. I've taught and coached several of your children, as well as the children and grandchildren of people in the audience. I'm here to speak on an issue that may seem small at first, but in, it is in fact deeply consequential to the health of our rivers and streams. The presence and, the presence and preservation of woody debris in our waterways. Down trees, branches, root wads, and other natural woody material play a vital ecological role in our stream systems. As an angler, I know firsthand that these features provide critical habitat for fish, especially for native species like brook trout and smallmouth bass, which rely on shaded pools and complex structures for shelter, feeding, and spawning. Woody debris helps create pools and eddies that sustain aquatic life. It slows down floodwaters, reduces erosion, and fosters biodiversity by offering refuge for insects, amphibians, and juvenile fish. As an educator, I've witnessed how exposure to healthy, functioning ecosystems can ignite curiosity and care in our students. When children see macroinvertebrates clinging to submerged logs or witness a trout darting beneath a fallen branch, they begin to understand the interconnectedness of life in a watershed. Just last week, I took all of my classes at Makin Middle School to Cove Branch for their own macroinvertebrate sample. This understanding is foundational, not just for their education, but for cultivating a lifelong sense of responsibility and stewardship. In addition to the ecological and educational value, we also have to consider the economic impact. Makin County benefits significantly from tourism and recreation, especially from anglers, hikers, and nature lovers who travel here to experience our pristine streams and scenic beauty. Fly fishing alone brings substantial economic activity to our local outfitters, guides, and restaurants. Several of them are here today. When woody debris is removed and stream habitats are degraded, fish populations decline and with them, the very resources that draw visitors to Makin County. Moreover, healthy streams provide long-term cost savings by reducing the need for costly bank stabilization, sediment removal, and infrastructure repairs associated with increased erosion and flooding. In trying to manage streams more neatly, we often end up paying more in the long run, both economically and environmentally. And unfortunately, well-meaning but ecologically misguided efforts to clean waterways by removing woody debris can undermine these values. While it's important to ensure navigability and address legitimate flood risks, routine removal of natural woody structures, as well as living riparian vegetation, often does, does more harm than good. It strips waterways of their resilience, homogenizes habitat, and degrades water quality. Let Makin County be a model of balance, where land stewardship includes not only the well-being of property owners, but also the integrity of our ecosystems and the prosperity of our local economy.
Mr. Talent, let me let you wrap it up real quick.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on the last sentence. I'm sorry. By protecting the natural structure of our streams, we also protect the recreational, educational, and economic wealth that they provide.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you, sir. Nick Potts?
Good evening.
Hello, Nick.
I'm Nick Potts, a Makin County native, small-business owner, and fly-fishing guide, part-time. Like many of you, I was shocked by the Army Corps of Engineers project, which blindsided citizens and local officials. As an outdoorsman, I know healthy ecosystems are vital for wildlife and hu- humans. What's happening to our rivers is disastrous. Habits destroyed for contractor profits worse than the hurricane's impact. I fish rivers nationwide, Wyoming, California, Idaho, Montana, and here in the Smoky Mountains and more. What makes many of the, those special places is their respect for their natural resources. They protect what they love, and it's time we do the same. This affects our rivers, tourism, as well as our jobs as guides, outfitters, farmers, and residents. The Corps may have meant, have meant well, but without oversight, this has become a cash cow for contractors benefiting no one else. They're removing fish habitats, bank vegetation that prevents erosion and damaging stream beds, home to endangered species and threatened species. I'm not here to criticize local officials. I want Makin County residents to unite against a federal agency overreaching and overstaying its welcome. We must ensure the Corps follows existing laws and secures all necessary permits to protect our lands and waterways. I'm no fan of big government, many of you know, but we need to use available resources to hold them accountable. They work for us, and they need, need to be reminded of that. Let's work together to stop this damage to our home and preserve fishing, hunting, and recreation for the generations that will follow us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
All right. Bill McCarty?
Thank you. As many of you know, I'm a longtime resident of Makin County on the Little Tennessee River. And since 1990, beginning with a contract from TVA, I've carried out biomonitoring of the Little Tennessee and its tributaries in Makin, Swain, and Raven Counties in recent years under the aegis of the Main Spring Conservation Trust. Over these years, I have documented gradual improvement in the ecological health of the part of the river between here and the Georgia line. That's as thanks to the efforts of many, including Makin County through the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. However, in the past few weeks, 35 years of documented improvement have been partially undone through work carried out by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, in violation of their own guidelines. Now, let me be clear. If any of us were to undertake this same work, we would have the Army Engineers on our back in a minute and probably be assessed a fine. I'm not suggesting that we should march on Washington and reform the Corps of Engineers. I do want to speak to the relationship of Makin County with the process. Since about 1977, the Corps has had regulatory authority over wetlands, which includes rivers. I have had occasion to interface with the Corps numerous times, and I've almost always agreed with their decisions. Certainly, my impression has been that they do a conscientious job. I will confess, this is a confession, that in the mid-'80s, I was one of the people who lobbied to get the Army Corps of Engineers to open a regional office in, in Asheville. So blame me if you want to. All that, all that to say that had I been in the county's position when this came up, I probably would have signed off on the agreement with the Corps too, based on their task, their track record. In hindsight, we, all of us, got blindsided by the Corps. And I'm not gonna speculate on why the Corps decided to ignore their own experts and embark on a destructive path in this, in the name of emergency release. Looking to the future, I will say that Makin County could have been better prepared. And at this point, I really want to direct directly to the commissioners. If you need expert legal help, engineering help, accounting and finance help, you know who to call on. Either in your employer or the local people who understand this region. If you need environmental expertise, what can you do? Call the agencies, which are overworked and usually don't have local knowledge. Or you might even wind up with the 2025 version of the Corps of Engineers. So there's gonna be a tendency here in the public to blame you guys, to blame the county. I guarantee it's gonna happen. Can't stop it. Maybe in hindsight, you could have done some things better. But what I see right now, and this is kind of referencing things that Mr. Young and Mr. Shields just said, I see an opportunity growing in part on our experience with the floodplain issue and on this unpleasant experience we're having right now, to be better prepared for the next environmental issue which comes up. And I'd like to be a part of helping with that. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Come on on in. All right. Betsy Beest?
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies.
And ladies. Thanks for correcting me earlier, Tammy. Almost lost my mind. So I'm wearing bright yellow today. I should have told you to bring your sunglasses because I want to talk about transparency in government. As I've told you guys many times before, I believe you to be honorable people, and I think that you want to do the right thing, and some more so than others in front of me here. So I've got three issues, less than three minutes, but I can do this. Fontana Regional Library, I hear you, I get you, and here's the deal. First of all, thank you so much for saying that you do not want to leave. I appreciate that. I hear you, and I'm gonna call you out on that. If this story changes, you know I will. Here's the other thing. Leah Gaston's email was used. In contrast to what you gentlemen have stated, Leah Gaston is on a board serving at your service and at your behest. So I'm gonna ask that you remove her from the library board because she, either her email or her husband, I don't care, don't know, it says, "Leaving the FRL needs to be discussed extensively by Makin and Jackson behind the scenes with a surprise decision." That woman works for you, for all of this county. Why have you not censured her about that, talked to her about that, made it public that what that email said was wrong? Just gonna say that. Second thing, Army Corps of Engineers, I appreciate you, and I appreciate you, Mr. Shields, for working hard to make something change after so much destruction was done. Here's my problem. I look back at the meeting minutes to see what, when this decision was made. In November, Board of Canal and Commissioners meeting, what happened was it said debris removal. And it was about the roads. It was about Highlands. It was about 106. Never once was the river mentioned. So, okay, yeah, you guys make decisions all the time, but that decision was made, and rightly so. You all said it was a bad decision to allow them to destroy our river. But I think that something should have happened before the destruction because I emailed you all way early when the destruction started. Secondly, thirdly, community funding pool. I certainly hope that you decide not to visit this issue again because this does good for our community. And if you read my letter in the newspaper, you will understand all the reasons why. And I will say that some people in this room have used free vaccines for their pets at the Makin County Animal Services, which is supposed to help people who can't afford to pay for vaccines. So that's one little thing that helps people in this community, and we are watching all the time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Betsy. Scott Beest?
Wow. Can we have a policy where I can go ahead and hurt?
You read my mind.
You have to ask her though, if you can.
She said it was okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm the boss of the household, but she said I could do that.
Don't lie while you're standing up here.
Thank you all for the thing on the waterways, because I think that really headed off a lot of where everybody was feeling tonight. Because that was, that caught us all blindly. And, and I'm hoping that, you know, now that we're kind of getting in control of this thing, the little- the little Otto Beach got totally destroyed, and they did grade it, but there's no, doesn't look like, it's a mud hole down there right now, and there needs to be more work done on that. As part of, if they got paid all that money to take that stuff out, they can fix what they messed up taking it out. I mean, it's just disgusting down there. It's like somebody got stuck in there the other night, she pulled in, and couldn't get her car out till the next day. So there's a real mud hole issue there, but I'm here about the community fund balance as well. I can't believe that us as a Christian-giving county can think about taking away stuff that does good for people in this county. I mean, that's just, it totally blows my mind, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mary Ann Ingram. Scott, we need a sign for the Otto Beach.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Ingram. I live at 115 Autry Road and have been here for 30 years, so I know I don't rank with the folks who have been born and raised, and their families born and raised for five generations back. But what I am here tonight about is to invite you guys and everyone seated behind me to come to Pine Grove School on the 17th, which is just days away, from 4:30 to 6:30, and enjoy looking at the school, seeing what the group is organizing for that school to be used, how it can serve Macon County and the citizens. So I hope you guys will make some time, it's 4:30 to 6:30. Hope to see you. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Heather Trosky. I butchered that.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for going on record again and continuing to state that you signed the FRL agreement in good faith. I do want to mention, though, as we know, if Jackson pulled out, we might be forced to as well. It has been stated over and over again that pulling out of FRL would be a mess for our county, so I'm asking you to please reach out to your counterparts in Jackson County and state your support of FRL, and why it's important to our entire region. Encourage them to come to some solutions to their concerns, as we did here in Macon County. Next, the pool. I'd like to echo what Ms. Janet Walker said at the last meeting. The covering of the pool needs to be a major priority. I know there was a meeting today, and I didn't get to attend that, so maybe the phases have changed, so I apologize for my ignorance on those details. This next part, I want to preface with, it's, I hate to so publicly disparage your private business, so I'm going to kind of tread lightly, but I feel this is important. The current practice place of Franklin High School's swim team is not cutting asthma, rashes, infections. Pediatricians in this town have warned against that particular facility. There's kids that have scholarship potential, yet they're developing new health problems because of using that facility. Franklin had 15 swim kids go to Junior Olympics last year. Fifteen kids from this, from our county, went to Junior Olympics. That's pretty incredible. Next, I was going to speak on the river cleanup. I appreciate you guys addressing that in the beginning. I would also like to say, consult experts. If a tree falls on my house, I'm going to call a tree guy. If I have a law question, I'm going to have to call a law guy. With these environmental issues, please consult the awesome experts that we have in our community. And lastly, responding to public comment. It's my understanding it's against the rules, I think it's highly inappropriate. I know sometimes folks might come up and are expecting a response, and I understand that puts you guys in kind of a tricky position, but I'm talking about like the blatant debate-style rebuttals that have been happening somewhat frequently over the last couple of years. This is our time to exercise our First Amendment right without fear that someone's going to go on a tangent afterward. Thank you, guys. Thank you for all your hard work. It's noticed, it's appreciated. Thank you for running these meetings smoothly. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Bond.
Hello, everyone. I spoke to a few of you over email, I believe. I'm going to be fairly quick, so we can get back to the river issue, as I see that as the subject of importance today. I'm here as I feel there is an important oversight, the last revision of the noise ordinance. For the past few months, I've been dealing with a neighbor with a incessantly barking dog, all hours of the day, barks at every car, squirrel, cloud in the sky, you name it, doesn't matter. It's rarely corrected, and on occasion, it's even encouraged. I work from home, I have retired neighbors, we all have to listen to it all day. I understand a lot of the county is rural, and the barking was left out of previous noise ordinance due to hunting dogs. I understand the reasoning, but many residents of this county do live on smaller plots of land, such as my neighborhood in Otto, which is made up of primarily one-acre lots. There's no escaping the noise. I can't walk around my property without getting barked at. I'm a dog owner myself, but this is rude to consider it, and it's a disruption to the beautiful place we call home. I've contacted animal control, who referred me to the sheriff. The deputy I spoke with said there was nothing he could do. He was surprised himself that they had no power to do anything about this. I'd like to request an amendment to the noise ordinance, enabling animal control, or possibly the sheriff's office, to issue fines for incessantly barking dogs. Our county is growing, and ordinance like this are common sense to places that are even mildly populated. I feel this a very reasonable change that will improve the lives of many citizens who are subject to neighbors who do not care for others around them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Leland Shockley.
I really don't want to be up here speaking to you guys, but I appreciate your time and being able to talk to all of you at once. I'm here about the debris removal and the senselessness that has been going on in this county and our rivers the last few weeks. The last meeting you guys held, you said that the rivers are going to be cleaned from the south side of the county towards the north side, but there's been no checks and balances. I have seen these guys cleaning on the Coliseum and up on Lake Emery, but not cleaning up by the middle school. So who's determining where they're cleaning at? Who's determining what a 30-degree angle leaning tree is on the river when you're cutting down live trees, putting more sunlight on our rivers, raising the water temperatures, and reducing the dissolved oxygen available for the fish in our rivers? Jackson County, every year, gets voted Trout Capital, West North Carolina. They are bringing in millions of dollars of tourism to Jackson County, but Macon County does nothing to support the fishing industry in Macon County. It is terrible. June the 1st is not soon enough to get these clowns out of the river and quit destroying these native fish and their habitat. We are supporting and encouraging the careless removal of natural debris, living trees from our rivers, and encouraging these guys to do that for larger payouts on their loads. Instead of making the fish and the native fish and their habitats the number-one priority on this project, and it's disgusting. It makes me sick. I own a business here in Macon County, where I take people fishing, I volunteer with nonprofits, I take wounded veterans fly fishing. I represent this county time and time again nationally. I finished 30th in the United States and 10th in the United States. This is a good place, and it's worth protecting. You guys need to wake up. The men on this board and the ladies on this board have the ability, the influence, and the power to make changes and stop what is going on. You really do. I voted for you guys time and time again, and I'm asking you to stand up for me, protect our home, quit letting the senseless destruction of our rivers go on. These trees provide shade, the banks from eroding. We got to do better than this. We have endangered fish species here that need protecting. We got bulldozers and cranes and 10-wheel diesel trucks going up and down, running over these fish beds. We have fish in these rivers that build domes out in the river, pyramids of rocks, they stack them, because the Little Tennessee is polluted with sediment. These fish can't reproduce, and all the other fish in the river depend on these fish for them to reproduce. When those beds get run over, guess what? That generation of fish dies, and they can't reproduce anymore. You cannot replace these native and endangered fish we have in Little Tennessee, and you're allowing it to go on. June the 1st is not fast enough, and you guys are responsible. You put in the bid for this, and who did we put in charge of doing this debris removal? I was told it was Matt Holland, Holland Construction, is the ones coordinating this here in Macon County. What is his expertise in hurricane debris removal? We got to hire scientists, people, people that know what they're doing, and we haven't done that, and it's sad, and we're better than this, and we need to protect our home. I'm passionate about this because I care about it, and I'm just, it makes my heart hurt, because the things that are going on, they're going to be irreversible. You can't go back, a smallmouth bass, a 15-inch smallmouth bass in a river can take up to 15 to 16 years to mature to that. When these fish are gone, they're not going to be around for my generation, for your kids' generation. Young people in this community are bored, they need something to do, they need to get out in the woods and get off their cell phone, and we're taking this resource away from them, and you don't even realize it. These things are irreversible, and we need to step up the plate. And I'm calling on you men, my teacher, my former classmate, a gentleman that teaches my son karate, I'm begging you to step up to this, use the resources. It's okay to make mistakes, but when you make a mistake as a man, you step up to the plate, you accept it, and you do what you got to do to make it better. And that's where we're at right now, and we can be better than this. Our town deserves better than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there another Nick Potts in the room? Just making sure. All right, Bill Trick.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Bill.
I'm here because I want to address the community fund issue. I don't know exactly where this stands at the moment, but I would like to see the commissioners require some sort of financial disclosure as to what other sources of funding the charitable organizations that apply for funding from the county are receiving. I'd also like to make sure that there's some way to verify that they're doing what they say they're doing, and I'd like to see that be a part of the criteria for any award that's made of any of those funds. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Dylan Castle.
Good evening, gentlemen. I also want to echo, I won't take the whole time, because I'm going to echo a lot of what Mr. Trick said. I also want to address the community funding pool. I help a lot with nonprofits, so I understand the benefit that they are to our community, and I'm not downplaying that in the least. My big concern is just making sure that tax dollars are spent appropriately and with good oversight. I've compiled a list of questions that myself and several other folks, over the course of the month of learning about this, have come up with. I won't read them all tonight, but I'll make sure to email them to you guys, just for you guys to really think about what all needs to be put in place, if this is indeed what you have to deal with. And making it as transparent to the public as possible, I think would go a long way. The reason I say that is because, myself being a conservative, being a constitutionalist, one of the fears that I have is I am frustrated, as many people are, with federal bureaucrats that are not elected being able to dictate so much of taxpayer dollars. And I'm not accusing the community funding pool of anywhere near that level, but obviously, philosophically, they're very similar places. We elected you guys, and during the discussion last month's meeting, one of the points that was brought up was the fact that this saves you time, that not everybody has to come to you and ask for money, that this funding pool committee can do that. I can understand the desire to be efficient with your time and your business, but when we're talking tax dollars, I elected you, we elected you, I didn't elect whoever is going to get appointed. And so that lack of direct involvement makes me nervous, and I just want to bring that to your attention. I don't know the process of where you're at, as far as it's too late now, I know the budget's coming up for the next year, so maybe that's a good point to mention, but it's just, it's really critical that you think about this from really high up, and not just, I want to help people in the community, and nonprofits are good. I can appreciate that, but if we forget the philosophy behind the decisions that we make, we find out that we're making bad decisions, and they come back around and they bite us, maybe like the river a little bit, I don't know, but you know, there's a lot of decisions, we don't get the benefit of having a crystal ball, so I'm just here trying to wave a red flag a little bit. I'm more than happy to email you these questions and meet with any of you if you have any more questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
That wraps up the public comment period. And now we're looking for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we need to remove item number 10A, our whole business. Dave Gottwald was actually traveling back from Florida, and we'll have a better update before we get to June meeting. We're on time and on budget with that project, we'll have a better update next month.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, on the consent agenda, item 12G, there's going to change in the organization that the permit is going to be going to. It will, instead of cool receptions, it will be parties by design for that event on May the 24th.
Okay.
What was the name of it again? Party?
Parties by design.
All right, anything else? Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
All right.
All right, just out of respect for Mr. Cave right here, you know, everybody in this room is welcome to stick around, but if you wanted to, if you had desire to leave, I just didn't want to be rude to him during his presentation, I'll give you guys a few seconds if you had desire to leave. All right, Mr. Cave. Reports and presentation, fiscal year '25-'26 budget presentation.
Tell me that.
Yeah. Were you having a meeting?
I didn't even take a look behind you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you having me here tonight. Obviously, this is the first budget presentation for you all, so you do have a copy of the budget in front of you, I'm going to give you some highlights tonight, and then we are going to schedule a work session, which will be Thursday, the 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. We'll recess tonight and have that work session to go over some of these issues we probably need to talk about. So before I get too deep into the presentation, I want to talk to you about accomplishments and the big, what do we do with the budget, what do we accomplish, what do we do with the funds we have, and what do we do with our programs? And I think it says a lot at the end of the year to look back and see what you accomplished, and you all have accomplished a lot. When you really look at this list, there's a lot of things on here that some people may not have been realized. Franklin High School project, the Highland School renovation and expansion project, Macon County Library repair project that we undertook, that's still in process, the Macon County Airport Meeting Room project that we were a part of, the Macon County Recreation Park, you've already started off on the first part of Phase 1A with the tennis courts, and the rest of that phase will follow. The Clock Tower renovation, which has been a big improvement to downtown. And then internally, there's been a lot of things, but we transitioned to a new building and environmental health software system, and we've taken a lot of our paperwork process that we're still working, but we're moving over to the MUNIS system to make us a little more efficient, a little more effective. When you look at that list, that's about 100 and over $146 million worth of projects right there. So for us, and for you all, and for this board and these people here, accomplish what you've accomplished with the funds that we have and all of this in the last year, that's a big pat on the back for us, and that says a lot for our intent on what we want to do here, the services we want to provide, and where we want to head. So now, let's talk about our goals for 2025-2026. And obviously, these are my goals, these are my proposals to you, and we'll have these discussions as we go through the next week or so, and we get on into the public hearing and the budget approval process, but these are the five main things that I think should But these are the five main things that I think should be my priorities and I'd like for you to consider to be the priorities of the board this year. I want to maintain a high level of quality service. We're in the service business. We provide a service to a lot of different folks in a lot of different ways. I want to make sure that we offer the right services to the right folks at the right time and we do that in the most productive and best way possible for those folks. A lot of that stems from our facilities, but a lot of it stems from our employees. We want to make sure we have the right employees in the right place to help these folks because that's what folks pay taxes for, that's what they come to us for. You hear all these people out here tonight, they expect us to produce. So that's what we want to provide to those folks. We want to maintain our existing facilities appropriately. There's been a lot of work. You saw the big list that I had there on the slide before, improvements we've made, the progress we've made. We want to keep that up because the last thing we want to do is we want to build a facility or fail to maintain a facility and have it fall behind and disrepair or something. So we want to make sure we upkeep those and we keep those in the best possible shape that we can. We're gonna miss some things. We have a very big area to cover, but we want to do that to the best of our abilities. Address any unmet needs that are a priority. There are always gonna be things that are gonna pop up. We, I heard somebody mention crystal ball there a few minutes ago. I don't have a crystal ball, y'all don't have a crystal ball. We don't have a way of knowing exactly what everything will be before it happens. So there are gonna be things that are gonna pop up that I may not know, that y'all may not know, that people have to bring to our attention, or things that just happened during the year. We have to adapt and adjust to meet those unmet needs of folks as they come up or services or agencies to make sure that we're putting the rubber where it meets the road, basically. We want to ensure that our departments that we have have adequate space. We gotta have good people to run them, we gotta have a good place for people to be. They gotta be able to have a place to come in, we gotta be able to serve the public from these places. So we gotta make sure before we expand a whole lot in different places that the services and departments we have have adequate areas to provide those services to people that come in. And then the most important thing probably is the fifth thing, and that's the plan for the future. I'm a planner. I tend to like to not be surprised. I like to know what I'm doing next week, next month, or next year. So I think it would behoove us for the direction we want to go and financially for us to develop a plan, figure out where we're headed and make sure that we have a direction that we want to go as a board that we can all support and move in that direction. So now, this is the slide that everybody's interested in. Proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. So the budget I proposed to you tonight maintains the property tax rate at 27 cents per hundred, just as it is now. Service fees are gonna basically remain the same with the exception of adjusting the EMS rates to conform to allowable Medicare guidelines. We adjust those occasionally to match what Medicare allows because obviously medical expenses goes up. We hadn't adjusted those since 2021, but other than that, we're planning on leaving all the rest of the fees the same. One of the things you'll see is our revenues are up slightly, and I'm gonna tell you why. It's not because of a tax increase. Revenues are slightly higher due to an increase in the taxable value of properties. And I'll show you that in a slide in a minute. Revenues are also slightly higher due to increased quantities of service fees that are collected, building permits, environmental health permits, various things that go through our processes, which are up a little bit, so therefore there's more revenue that comes in off of those. One of the things that I will mention is our sales tax revenues. Basically, our sales tax revenues are flat. A couple of years ago, you had some really big upswings in those, and that was very positive for us financially. But one of the things we've seen is that basically those are, they're basically remaining flat basically where they were last year. So we're not seeing a really big increase in our sales tax numbers. And then our intergovernmental transfers decreased slightly. Those are the monies that transfer back and forth between governments or grants or whatever. So those are down a little bit. Overall, our revenue's in pretty good shape. For our budget this year, proposed budget, $64,711,599. You'll notice the comparison for a couple of years back there. Last year, it came in, it started off at $63,704,000. So there is some difference in there in that figure. But remember, the number that we're giving you this year is based on the same tax rate that we have last year. So the value of your properties has went up, you're collecting a little more tax money, your service fees have went up, so you're generating a little more revenue off of those. So that gives you the ability to tackle some of these projects and some of these endeavors that we have without having to increase that tax rate. General fund revenues by source. I'll talk to you a little about where we're spending the money out here in a few minutes. But if you take a look at this slide, you'll see that the majority of our money comes from our tax collections, about $36,500,000 comes of our tax collections. The other big chunk of our funds is our sales tax money, that's about $14 million. But remember, that's the fund that's pretty much flat. There, you're not gonna see a lot of change in that. And then, of course, you have some other smaller sources of revenue in there. But again, the tax base tends to be our largest and most consistent source of revenue. We'll have other sources, sales tax will go up and down a little, we have interest in investments, but that fluctuates really wildly sometimes, so you can't really, it's hard to budget consistently on that, you don't want to rely too much on that. I can promise you, and I can't say enough about Lori and Lindsay and the rest of the finance staff, they've done really well to walk me through this process and I'm 100% confident in their numbers. They are not going to over or underestimate our revenue sources. We're gonna make sure that we're gonna be good at the end of the year. So when we give you these revenue numbers, I can pretty well assure you, they're on mark. So I'll talk about the extra money that comes in. This is your values for 2026. Your total real personal values is of almost $13,12.8 billion. Motor vehicle values, $506 million, or total estimated value of $13,406 million. That's about $300 million above where it was last year. About $250 million of that is based on the real and personal value. Believe it or not, I would not have thought it, but about $50 million of that is in the vehicle category. So that helps you, that means that there's more people paying the 27 cents, so you don't have to worry about the increase. And you should have a little bit more funds there, again, to tackle these projects and these things that you want to accomplish. Obviously, you see the collection rate there, 98.56%, that's pretty close to where it was last year. Motor vehicle levy sits at 100%. Obviously, you have to pay that when you go get your tags, so that's why that number sits at 100%. If you get a tag, you have to pay that. And that gives us the estimated total levy of that part of $35 million. And then your penny there brings you in about $1,322,000, which is up from about $1,290-some-thousand last year. So let's talk about expenditures. Remember, I told you, I talked about being efficient, being effective. One of the things that I'm probably most proud of, and we'll talk about details a little bit more in this budget, you did a lot, as I talked about that first slide. You have a lot of things that you can accomplish this year. Being efficient is making the most of what you have. And we have tried to work this budget to give you a proposal to consider that takes into effect not everything that everybody wants, because we couldn't get there, but it hits a lot of the areas that we want to look at. So we tried to be as efficient and effective with that as possible, doing that effectively and fiscally responsible with the funds that we have. If you'll notice there, the biggest chunk of our expenses happen to be public safety. It's 31% of the expenditures that we have. Now, I will tell you, most people, when you say public safety, they think law enforcement, EMS. That also includes your code enforcement folks. So all of that's under your public safety section there. Then our second biggest category of expenditures is human services, and that, of course, is your DSS folks and your health folks and your other human service type agencies. And then, of course, the third biggest expenditure that we have out of the general fund is for education. We'll talk a lot more about that in a few minutes. Another thing that I'll bring to your attention, we get the transfer to debt service fund there of $2 million, slightly over $2 million. We'll talk about that in a few minutes when we talk about debt service. So typically every year, we have what's called pay-go capital. Your capital expenditures are usually anything over $5,000. We do have a capital improvement plan, but normally we don't include anything in there over 100, if it's less than $150,000. So your pay-go capital tends to be items that are over $5,000, but you typically pay for out of your operating budget. So this is your list of pay-go capital expenditures for this year. It's a mix from the IT department or mapping department for a plotter, there's some SQL servers for IT, some equipment for the garage, a big expenditure for the detention centers and elevator replacement, and some upgrades to the control room over there at the jail facility or detention facility. We have a vehicle for planning and code enforcement, and then a couple of pieces of equipment for EMS and a new ambulance for EMS. We had to, we actually looked at upgrading some of the kennel doors over at the animal shelter. There's some concerns about the safety of some of those doors. And then, of course, there's some allocations there for the Macon County Schools and Southwestern Community College. I'll talk about Macon County Schools and Southwestern Community College in a minute, but I'll have another, some more information about those. But that's essentially your pay-go capital list for this year. One of the things that you're not gonna see on there are patrol cars. I'm gonna talk about those, there's an agenda item on the agenda that we're gonna talk about. So don't panic when you don't see the patrol cars on there. There's something we're gonna have on the agenda, we're gonna talk about in a few minutes about those. Want to talk about our employees. I talked about the quality of service that we have and make sure that we provide adequate services, and we can't do that without our employees. That's one of the most important parts of our operation is our employees. The proposed budget that we have here provides for a cost of living increase for those folks of 3%. I want to remind the board that that's not a raise, that's an adjustment based on some industry standards that says something that you bought this time last year for a dollar, at this point, costs you a dollar and 3 cents this year. So we do those adjustments to make sure that the purchasing power is the same. It's not a raise, it's not necessarily just to give them a bump in pay, it's a calculated adjustment to make sure that on, in reality, they're making the same amount of money at least that they were last year, they have the same purchasing power. There's a lot of government still in this process, but I already know that the Town of Silver and Town of Franklin are proposing 3%. Actually, I think Silver's gonna propose a 4%. So that's pretty consistent across what you're gonna see with the government. You'll see a lot of budgets rolled out in the next week or so. You're also gonna see it on the North Carolina side, we'll see it in the school system proposal when they come, they're proposing anywhere from a 3% to 4% increase for their folks. And it is based on the Consumer Price Index, that's not just a number that we came up with somewhere. When you look at those numbers, it's kind of interesting, you know, some things go down. The report that I looked at today, the fuel costs were down, but then your food costs are up. So it's a rolling average across 12 months, and that's where that number comes from. This proposal also continues to maintain the existing pay plan with the step adjustments that we move folks through the steps and their pay grades. One of the things that we have also written in this proposed budget is a proposal to help retain and recruit our younger employees as far as the term, not necessarily in age, but the shorter term employees that have been here between five and 10 years. What we were seeing in a lot of cases is folks will work here for a couple of years and then they go somewhere else and trying to figure out why we're losing people somewhere, why, how can we retain these people, how can we keep them in the system? If, with this proposal, those folks will be eligible for a longevity payment if they've been here five years. We have that in place now, it doesn't start until you've been here 10 years, but that drops that down to the five-year mark. Five-year mark is where you're vested in the North Carolina retirement system. So at that point, those folks have put at least five years in, they're vested in the system, and that's a good mark for us to encourage them to stay with us along with that retirement vesting so that they continue to be good employees for us. Part-time employees are now gonna be eligible to contribute to the 401K program, they can actually contribute into that, just like the full-time employees. I'll talk about positions. There were 17 new positions requested by different departments in this budget proposal. I can't stand here and tell you that they're all without merit or value. There were some that did, they had merit, they had value. One of the difficult things that I have to do is figure out somewhere in the middle there what we can afford to pay, what our needs are, and come up with some sort of a compromise and then present that to you and then we'll negotiate from there as far as whatever we need to do with those folks. Of those 17, I only approved four of those in the proposed budget. There's an actual list in your budget package that you have that will tell you what those proposals were, where those positions were, so you can certainly look at those. The two sheriff deputies and the one part-time SRO position, and I'm gonna explain why I included these. Sheriff's Department was able to basically absorb those positions within their operating budget, there was no overall increase to their budget financially, they rearranged some things, made themselves more efficient in certain areas and were able, the overall increase across their organizational budgets was zero by adding these employees. So therefore, I have a hard time arguing with that. If the desire for the service is there and the need's there and they can absorb it within their budget, that's a tough sell for me to argue with. The DSS position, those folks are, there's a lot of volume that's going through that agency over there. Those folks are strapped sometimes, and one of the concerns that we have based on those numbers is to make sure we have enough social workers to match the amount of cases that are coming through there. They actually asked for three. I was okay with one of those coming into that position. The reason I put this in the proposal is at least 50% of that position is paid for by North Carolina. So all the positions that I included in here were either absorbed within the organizational budget that we already had or were funded at least partially from some other agency somewhere. And I'm not telling you that all of those other positions didn't have merit. There were a lot of good cases made. There's a lot of facts out there that those folks presented to us, and it's, sometimes it's a hard thing to say no. I'm also gonna make sure, I promised those department heads that we'd let them know what was in the proposed budget, so they will get their proposed budgets tomorrow. And I encourage them to challenge us. If you have the case and you need to come before us in a work session, I challenge them to come do that and make their case. It's okay if they come up here and say, look, I know he said no, but we need a yes, it's okay for that because that, you all need to have that opportunity, these folks, to make that decision if they desire to do that. One management position was converted over to a field tech position for EMS. That was a position that I vacated there, we've done some reorganization there. They had actually requested for five employees. But I took that one management position that I hadn't converted over to a field tech position and split up some of those other duties. So that's where that position came from. There were some reclassifications included, and then health insurance rates are gonna remain the same. So one thing I want to bring up, the last salary study that we did was four years ago. So we're due for a five-year look at our salary study. I would encourage the board, I think one of the things we need to do this year is to conduct a salary study, look at our package in general, see what we provide, see how competitive we are, and review that. I think we need to do that on a regular basis. I'm not one of those people that wants to put money into hiring a consultant to tell me something that I can either do on my own or we've got staff that can do. So I'd like for us to do that internally, at least to start with and see where we get with that this year, and then have that ready for the next budget cycle next year. So we can, we hear folks say, you know, I'm leaving for money, I don't make enough money, I'm leaving for benefits, I have these concerns. Why are people leaving? Why are we getting people? Why are we not getting people? One way or another, I think it's good for us to lay that on the table and look at it to see where we're at with those things, to be fair for them and for you in that same matter. Let's talk about Macon County Schools. I talked about the education budget there a little while ago. Macon County Schools, I've asked them to come to your work session to present their full budget proposal. The proposal that they've submitted to us requested a, almost a $2.2 million increase in operational funding to $12,377,245. We couldn't get there to a $2 million increase. So the funds that we have actually proposed in the budget this year, I proposed, are the figures you see in front of you there. The solid waste fees are $86,228. There's actually a $400,000 increase to their operational funding this year, and it's split between the public schools' current expense and the teachers' supplement monies. And then the capital outlay, we left it or returned it to the $1,150,000 mark. And then the timber sales is just pass-through funds that come from us, come through us for $60,000. That may change, that varies, obviously, sometimes that's probably a low number, but to be safe, we budget $60,000 for that. And then we also allocated another $50,000 for the CTE Paltz internship program. And then we also allocated another $50,000 for the CTE Paltz internship program. So let's talk about those funds. One of the, again, the school board or the superintendent and their folks will come and meet with you next Thursday and do their presentation to you. A couple of things that I have not included in there that we need to talk about. First of all, their capital request was 38 million somewhere in that neighborhood. That actually included the New East Franklin Elementary School, which is going to be about 36 million. We, we have discussed that before. We've talked about our capital improvement plan. One of the things, when, when we talk about future planning a little bit later in the slideshow, one of the things I think we need to do is we need to start preparing to apply for that funding for the, the North Carolina School Construction Grant that we received over there from Franklin High School. Those budgets for elementary schools are capped at 42 million, so a $36 million school would fit very well under that $42 million figure. So we obviously, there was no way we could fund a 36, $36 million school this year. They do have a capital list that, that they will provide you. It's, it's split up between schools, so we didn't necessarily specify the $1,150,000 where we wanted it to go. Let them use it, 600,000's used as technology, but let them use it in the area that, that they deem fit with that. They didn't prioritize those categories, so therefore they can, they can decide where they want to use that at. The other thing that they'll talk to you about, one of the, the dollar figures that they have in their proposal is another $250,000 for the free lunch program. You all funded that last year as part of the, pulling it out of the unassigned fund balance, pulling out your fund balance. I'm not going to argue the benefits either way of the program. I certainly know that there are folks that deserve that, but I don't think that's a programmed budget side. Typically, your operating budget or recurring expenses occur year after year after year. You funded that expense out of your fund balance. It's supposed to be a one-time expense and usually that's what you fund with, with those type of funds. So my suggestion for you for that would be to wait till July and then address that, have them come to you. And if you want to, if you want to address that issue, have them come to you, make the decision if you're going to try and fund that out of fund balance next year or not. We could go ahead and do it, but then we're going to change fiscal years in a month and then we're going to have to roll monies back over. So it may be easier to do that in July. But one of the, that's just one of the things I want to make sure you're aware of, that that's not in my operating budget, but there is a way that if that's, if the board so desires to fund that, there is a way to do that either this month or next month. So this is a chart that shows your Macon County Schools funding. And you will notice, and if you look back on one of my other slides, it talked about education funding was $12 million. Well, then this slide shows 13 million, so I'm going to explain that. If you read the footnote at the bottom of the screen, which may be hard for folks in the audience to read, but I'll read it. This particular 13,579,000 chunk includes our current expenses, our supplements, our solid waste fees, our capital outlay, and our debt service funded by the general fund. Remember, a while ago, I showed you that pie chart that had education and had debt service there with that. We'll talk a little bit more about debt service in a minute, but this figure encompasses all the funds that you apply toward Macon County Schools out of your budget, whether it's operating money, debt service, et cetera. And that adds up to 21% of your budget. Southwestern Community College, they had actually asked for an increase in operational funding this year. I'm sorry, library, we'll do the library. We'll do the library since I have this slide up. Macon County Library. College, I'll back that. I have an IT moment, Josh. Southwestern Community College, proposed funding of $510,439. That was a slight increase in their operational funding. One of the things that we're proposing in this budget, and we've already talked, Southwestern Community College about that, is one of the, the maintenance employee that's at the Grove Center is actually a county employee. They would like for that to actually be a Southwestern Community College employee. We have a vacancy in our maintenance department, so we can transfer that person to that vacancy and then we can just allow them to fund that as a position through the community college. It takes out a little bit of the, the issue with them as far as who does that employee work for and as far as function inside that facility. We also proposed funding $125,600 for capital expenditures for them. They actually had a, a much bigger list than that, including $800,000 for a driving range and some other, other things that they wanted included. But we were able to include enough funds to replace the roof on a modular unit, do some electrical system repairs, a heating, water heating system replacement, some paint and some railing replacements. And there's also some other, some other things that we need to talk about, about them when we talk about capital projects. There's some, some things they're going to have to come to you for July and August as far as funding going into the next fiscal year as well, there are going to be capital issues. Now the library, proposed funding of $1,225,634 or a 3.58% increase. That increase had to do with their North Carolina retirement contributions, increased health insurance costs, and they were going to offer two and a half percent cost of living adjustment for their employees. North Carolina Forest Service, basically the same thing. They proposed, proposed funding of $104,613 or an increase of $6,997 for salary obligations. That's one of the funds that we matched their funds. They're required statutorily. If they're going to be in Macon County, we have to match part of their funds. And of course, they're facing the same situation as the teachers, some health insurance costs and some potential raises on their side on the state budget. It makes it a little tricky for us because the state budget hasn't passed yet, so we're, we're going off what we think their proposed budget's going to be. So obviously, that could change somewhere, but that's the best estimate we have at this time as far as, as what those funds need to be. Now, capital improvements, the big numbers. I remember I talked about Southwestern Community College there a minute ago. Couple of things that, that we're going to have to undertake this next fiscal year and the previous boards have already committed. Southwestern Community College had a construction meeting about two weeks ago to kick off the construction of the new burn building that's been in the process for years out here at the Public Safety Training Center. The board had already committed $2,673,000 to that project to go along with the bond money and other funds that they have to complete that project. So we will have to follow through with that process and I've, I've told Dr. Thomas that they probably want to come to you in July or August, give you an update on that project and that way we can proceed on our end as far as actual funding our part of that project. One of the other things that we need, we're going to have to consider this fiscal year is the renovations to the National Guard Armory. When that agreement was made several years ago with the lease agreement, Macon County committed to do some renovations to that building whenever construction on the burn building started. So now that the construction on the burn building has started, we need to bring that before you all to see about those renovations. There was already an architectural design done on that, so we need to bring that back to the table. The estimates on that were two and a half million dollars. So that's something that we need to have the community college come to you, have those discussions, and we're going to move forward to that in the next fiscal year. Board's also previously committed $376,000 for a science room improvement at the SCC Grove Center campus. And then, of course, I mentioned the tennis courts there a little earlier. We've already done part of Phase 1A, but the remainder, if the estimates ring true, the remainder of Phase 1A, which are the pickleball courts, et cetera, is $1,393,075 as soon as we hopefully get the, some work back from the engineers there. So there's a lot of things for you to consider moving forward and it's, that's another good reason it's important for us to have a very valid and very well-tested and proven capital improvement plan so that we know where we're at on fund balance, we know what we can do as far as debt service, and we know where we can go with some of these projects. So a couple of future needs we're going to have to consider also, obviously, we did a repair to Macon County Library. Macon County Early College is basically the same building built almost at the same time in the same way. We've already taken a look at it, so there's going to be some repairs that we're going to have to do that. Same porch, porcupine thing out in front there, we're going to have to just work on. We also were approached and asked by the school system, could we enclose that as an office out front to provide them a little more security for those folks that are sitting there at the front desk? Because right now, you can go through the front door of Macon Early College and just go straight into the classroom. So when we price that, we're going to price it with those options so that you can see both of those figures. This will be the repair figure, this will be the, the enclosure figure, probably won't be a whole lot of difference with it. And that's an estimate at this point. And then a couple of other needs that we typically fund every year, the HVAC package, which we, we have found does us very well, which goes back to that maintenance statement I had at the beginning. We, we need to stay on top of those. We don't want to come to you one month and say, oops, we, we've got a hundred thousand dollar repair we got to make somewhere because we didn't do our routine maintenance and didn't keep up with stuff somewhere. Generator package, which may not be this much for the courthouse in front of the county buildings, because right now, the generator doesn't carry this whole building, so if power goes out in here, we have some issues up here. $150,000 for a lift station package, believe it or not, we're in the sewer business. We, we have some sewer lines that we have to monitor and maintain that we actually don't collect any revenue on, so we need to figure out, make sure we can maintain those appropriately and hopefully, one of these days, we can transfer those back to work out an agreement with the town where they probably need to be. Some IT system resiliency and intrusion testing. And then, of course, the recreation park Phase 1B, which is the parking and some other landscaping improvements out there, they estimated at one point, well over 1.1 million dollars. And then $250,000 for an alarm system and access control upgrades. Now, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of stuff. We're, we're not going to start all those and buy one. We, we will have to go through those, we'll prioritize those, we'll look at those, we'll look at our funding and we'll pick those out, the ones that are important to us, and that's the ones that we'll accomplish. But those are the things that you need to be thinking about and have on your, in the back of your mind for the upcoming year. When we start planning about our funding and the money we have in fund balance and the monies that we have coming in, just remember, there's some commitments there. And the board's previously made about a $20 million commitment to some of these other projects such as the, the SCC burn building, you know? Last year, there was about $20 million committed out of the fund balance, the Highland School project, the burn building, some other things. So you have to remember, sometimes you have previous commitments you have to fund as well as the needs that come up as you go forth. And then the big needs that we need to talk about when I talk about planning, adequate office space for board elections, veteran services and housing. We've talked about it for a long time. I think that needs to be a priority for us to get those folks situated on space. We've also had discussions about the senior service center needs and the law enforcement center. The space for board elections and veteran services and even housing is, are probably not huge ticket items, depending on how we can work that out, whether we can rearrange somewhere, whether we got to do something with space. But your big ticket items are going to be your senior service center and your law enforcement center, if you want to entertain that option somewhere down the road. That's where it becomes very, very important for us to, to plan, to be able to make those purchase, purchases, or whether we're going to do debt service or whether we're going to pay for that somewhere down the road. Let's talk about debt service. Your debt service this fiscal year will, will increase by $4,521,389. That's increased by $4 million. Your total debt service this year will be $9,554,133. That will, we will drop a little of that off next year and you'll start, starting in 2028, you'll start to see some of that other previous debt start to come off, which will open you up to, to being able to tackle some more projects along the way. And that's where Davenport and Associates is very helpful for us. They can help us do these planning estimates to figure out what you can do as far as debt service and how you can handle that. I will tell you, all but $120,000 of that $9,554,000 is for school facilities. There's not one Macon County facility proper that we have any debt service on.
Say that again?
There's not one Macon County facility such as Harpenter Building, Greg Park, this building, that we have debt service on. Majority of that $9,554,133 is debt service for school facilities. Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that other payment is on a sewer line project that was with the town of Franklin that for somehow we paid 39% of somewhere in that neighborhood.
They reimbursed us for 31.4%.
We're paying? 60, 68%. Just for perspective on where our debt service is. However, I will tell you, it's pretty impressive that we're able to undertake nine and a half million dollars worth of debt, still be able to do everything that we do. And you talk about being efficient, we, we're squeezing about as much as we can squeeze out of those dollars to get the services we get somewhere and keep that tax rate at 27 cents. So what do we do going forward? How, how do we address some of these things going forward? So this, this would be, this would be my proposal. Obviously, we have a fund balance and we don't, we don't need to wait till the middle of the year to address some of these projects, but every year, we have an audit and every year, we will come back with results somewhere around the fall, usually November, December. And traditionally, what happens is your unassigned fund balance will grow a little bit. I think that's a good thing for us because we always should put a little bit back because if I'm spending 100% of all the revenue you give me every year, it's like being at the end of the month and the checkbook's empty. I, you, you want me to be able to squeeze some expenses out of here, you know, we spend 98% of what you give us, we spend 99% of what you give us. You don't want me to come in here and say, I spent 101% of what you've given us. So it's fiscally responsible for us to always come to you at the end of the year. You're going to have a few funds to roll back into some things. I think we need to make those monies work for us. I think we need to be effective and efficient with those funds. I think we need to come back in the middle of the year and have a mid-year meeting, maybe even, even before then, and look at some of these things that we need to fund in addition to what you may be able to fund out of your normal fund balance, any of these normal capital projects. You all adopted a policy in August 2024 concerning your unassigned general fund balance, so we have some baselines on, on where to work with that. But I think we need to, to have that mid-year review and, and don't wait till next budget year to look at some of these things. What would we do with that? There's a lot of options with that. Your fund balance typically, whether you're moving it in or whatever you're doing with it, you don't want to do operating expenses, you don't want to recur any expenses. You want those usually to be one-time expenses or one-time infusions of cash somewhere. Address some of these immediate needs that we bring up or even some more that y'all might bring up that I may not even be aware of. At that point, maybe, obviously, the school system had a big wish or big want or a big requirement and we weren't able to get there. Maybe we need to have that conversation with them and look at them three months in, two months in, six months in, have that meeting with them and say, what are we going to do? That may be the time that you can look at some of their other capital needs. I will also broach the subject, you, you can provide fund balance for them to do operating. However, I would caution you against that because what will happen is sometimes people, and I'm not saying that they will, but, but if you do that, what are you going to do next year? You, you can't keep pulling money out of the savings account to pay the power bill is a good example for me to bring up. There are ways to get there, but it's going to take some good planning on our part, it's going to take some good planning on their part. So I don't think that our budget discussions will be done on June 10th, hopefully when we approve the budget. I think it's going to be a constant discussion over months to get where we want to be and where you want to be with this budget and the services that, that people are asking for us and the funds that are required of us. Look at these housing needs. We may be able to do those, we can probably do those way sooner than waiting till the end of the year. Think about capital reserve. We have 500,000, we have a million dollars that, we had a really good interest year and we had some funds come in and, and I managed to squeeze in at 97% expenses this year and we had some money to come back in at the end of the year. Think about a capital reserve fund. Put the money somewhere, set it aside, and if you want to do a senior center, you want to do a law enforcement center, you want to do something else, set that aside. The one caution I would give you with that is if you designate it in capital reserve, you can't necessarily pull it back out for non-capital projects. There's ways to set it aside and it's kind of like you, you, you've set aside the $20 million or you've committed to the $20 million, but we may not have moved it into a capital reserve fund. Think about that intelligently when we get to that point, but you may want to somehow earmark those funds to, to get you in a good position financially to fund these projects somewhere down the road. And then, of course, I'm not the, the end-all, know-all of the things that we need to do. There may be projects that y'all are aware of, that you want to bring up, that, that we want to entertain, that I hadn't even had a thought of. You may want to look at some of these projects for debt service, the, the recreation park. If we did Phase 1A, 1B and move into 2, I think we're going to be in the 4.8-ish million dollar range somewhere. dollar range, somewhere in there, I think is what the estimates were. If that's something that you want to consider, then we need to talk to Mitch with Davenport. We need to look at our finances. Maybe you want to do debt service on that and do a whole project at one time. We just need to do it fiscally responsible and make sure that it fits into all of the other projects and things that we've got going on. Now let's talk about solid waste. Phase two cell three of the landfill is engineered, ready for construction. It will require debt service in this fiscal year. And I remember solid waste fund is the enterprise fund. It's considered essentially a separate budget from your operating money. We consider it to be almost a separate department, separate budget. So their funds are all kept separate and they're not intermingled. So their debt service is not included in that slide that I gave you earlier. It will require debt service, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 million plus to construct that cell, cell three over at the landfill. But the good thing is they actually have some debt service that's rolling off this year. So they will have some capacity. We've actually asked, Davenport and Associates, the folks that do your capital improvement plan, he will be here next Thursday and will have some preliminary stuff. We've asked them to do a capital improvement plan analysis on the solid waste fund because that's a lot of money. That's a lot of stuff that you need to start planning for. It gives us a way to make a better educated decision on how to fund those. And it puts you all in a better spot to be able to look at those projects, figure out what we can do and help guide us in the direction of where we need to be with that. And then, of course, the other big things that we're going to accomplish there this year, Carson Convenience Center, we're going to complete that. We've got some repairs or replacement to do on two buildings over there, the recovery building and recycling building. One of the, actually, one of those is the insurance replacement and we're working on another one as far as where the funds are going to come from for that one. And then, one of the things that capital improvement plan can do for you, we always, we may have a discussion about tax rates, and then we always have discussions about tipping fees and availability fees. How does that work for you? Does that work? Do you need those? How does that play out? That's one of the things that capital improvement plan can do for you, is lay the foundation for you to look at these projects you need to do over the next several years, see where that debt service is and see what you need to do to those tipping fees and availability Fire departments. There are actually two fire departments this year that request an increase. Otto's asked for a very slight increase of three tenths of a cent. And Coliseum Fire Department has asked for a one cent increase. So we're going to ask those folks to come to you at the work session to present their budget proposals to you for your consideration. There may be, one of the things that we've talked to the fire departments about, and you'll see your budget package, Otto, we're talking about a lease agreement with them for an ambulance. If we work that out in our proposed budget, it may offset their increase. They may not have to do that, but we'll talk to them about that when they come to you with that, with their budget plan at the work session. Gentlemen, in conclusion, proposed budget is $64,711,599 with the tax rate remaining the same as presented for your consideration.
Well done, Mr. Cabe.
And obviously, I will certainly take questions, but I also understand that's a lot to digest. Again, I can't say enough about the finance staff for leading me through this one. But we will, we'll be glad to address any questions you have, particularly next Thursday. Obviously, I know that the school system, we would like to be here. The fire departments that are asking for increases, we'd like to be here. I'm assuming, would you like for both those departments that are proposing employees, the sheriff's office and the DSS to be here? Or would you like to wait and let me know before then?
What do you guys think?
Do you have a question, Sheriff?
And also, you know, Southwest Community College, we got their operational expenses covered. We didn't get all their capital expenses. We can have them come, or we're going to have to have them come back in July or August. They don't need any of the funding for that burn facility after the first of July anyway. So we don't want to do it this month. We want to wait until the first of July and do that. So they will for sure be here in July or August. So if you want them to wait till then and come, or we can have them come now, or if they desire to come, I'll certainly let them be here.
No, and I don't want to overload you right here, but I do think, you know, it'd be probably a good decision to review a lot of our previous commitments. Two and a half million dollars to renovate that National Guard building. You know, we just built a 10,000 square foot facility for about that, you know. So I wouldn't mind just reevaluate, but.
All right, I'll have them come.
What do you think?
And then, again, I'm also, especially if you're a liaison commissioner, one of the things, obviously, there were a lot of employee requests there that I didn't include. I will, again, encourage them to come to you if you're a liaison, if they want to make a case and say, look, we got to do something different. That's, that's why y'all were there, is to hear them out. And it's okay. If it, if it goes a different direction to what I propose, then I certainly don't have an issue with that. I will mention one thing that was brought up in public session, community funding pool. I can tell you where community funding pool is at the moment. We had five applications submitted at the deadline, four or five. One of them came in right at the deadline. For the community funding pool, because we had that posted on our webpage, we were required to have 13 members. So we're going to have to keep posting that to see if we can get enough folks. There's no way that we're going to get that accomplished by the end of the fiscal year. It can't happen between now and July. So those funds are going to have to roll over in the next budget year. I didn't specifically put the $75,000 in this budget for community funding pool. But if we're going to spend the $75,000 now, we got to move it over into next year's budget, then we can have that discussion mid-year out of those funding discussions we have. If, if the board desires to continue following through with the community funding pool, we can do that after the fact out of those other funds that we'll have mid-year there. Any questions on that?
I believe you and I will follow up that discussion. We've talked about it. The quarters of a lot of our programs that are out there provide a lot of service to young people and families and things like that.
We just knew that typically that funding either needs to be done in May or no later in June. It's really a chore for us to get the funding out in June and to get all the paperwork back with all the budget process we have to go through anyway. So we, we just know that the 75,000, it's already budgeted. There's no way we're going to get it, people onboard, a pool set up, make the decision, have that done by July 1st. So we know those funds are going to have to roll over. So therefore, you'll have access to those July.
I'd love to read a little bit more on the 401K for your part-time.
Yes, sir.
Now, how's that a benefit? Is that 1%? Take me a picture.
We don't actually budget a certain percentage for those folks, but if the proposed budget goes through, the part-time folks will be eligible for the 3% cost of living as everybody else. So they can choose that 1% to 3% or more that they want to contribute to that 401K. Up until January, I believe, of this year, they weren't even eligible to contribute. So that way, they at least now can contribute to that. And they have an option for retirement process. And it's not ideal. Obviously, there, there was some discussion on other things that maybe can be considered. And we can certainly look at that. That's probably one of the discussions we need to have when we do the, I call it a salary study, but really it's a review of our entire benefit system, something that we need to do in that process and include that in those discussions.
And those, the people who work at these convenience centers, take my hat off to them.
Yes, sir.
And especially the people that's been there 15-plus years. We can find some way to give them a stop and or stimulate their term or something like that with a few dollars. I think retaining people is a very important part. And we've all been around these convenience centers on the weekend.
I agree.
I'm telling you, those people need a medal.
Very unappreciated job.
After a holiday.
Yeah, or after the holiday. Yeah, they need, they need to be reviewed and looked at and listened to. You can't do it without them. So I sure hope we all look at them in a favorable way.
No, I mean, if you're looking for feedback, personally, this budget, I think, is intentionally, you know, kind of hard and calculated. And I would rather encompass all that right now than to defer, you know, late in the year. So at least if we, if we kind of know what we're deferring, you know what I mean? And then the other thing, I wanted to just, I wanted to see what it would cost to have the enterprise fund, the landfill, they stay open 30 more minutes a day. Do they close right now at 3:30 or 4:00?
Should be 4:00.
4:00. Just curious, what kind of cost basis it would be to, you know. But that's really all I have.
I appreciate your patience. Obviously, my presentation's a little different. I'm certainly open to criticisms and concerns and opinions if we need to change anything. And I'm certainly sure that I probably missed something somewhere. But hopefully, everything is in your book and your package. If you have any questions, please get up with me and I'll probably be glad to try and answer those for you.
Mr. Cabe, personally, I'd like to say thank you for being so open.
Yep.
I'm sure to all of us. You don't come, you don't run in high when you see us coming. You don't run back there. You're very open with us. And I want you to know from us, I really appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cabe. But don't go too far. Oh, you, take a break?
Taking a break.
All right, you want to take a break?
Yeah.
Let's have a five-minute recess. Let's have a five-minute recess. Now, we have, let's see here, fiscal year. All right, annual report for Macon County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Brent Holbrooks.
Thank you, sir. Hi, I appreciate you, gentlemen, appreciate your time. I can tell you that I'm paper, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint like Mr. Cabe. And I've been working on this thing since about the first of the year, on and off. So bear with me, thank God for Canva, if you, anybody knows Canva? Yeah, so we'll thumb through it fairly quick. I don't want to take up too much of your time. We'll start with the Crime Prevention Unit there. It's headed up by Captain Nick Loft House and Lieutenant Eddie Crawford. And I can proudly say that we are fully staffed on the road. So we had no openings whatsoever on patrol. And to be honest with you, I could probably have four more positions, not two, and actually fill those positions. So we're doing something right. They responded to 14,730 calls in 2024. Over a page there, supporting professional regulation, that's just right outside the door here, civil process, courthouse security. We have three civil process officers, six courthouse security officers, four administrative employees. And you can see there the numbers of papers that we've served, jury summons, subpoenas, et cetera. And the monies collected was 80,125.94. Now, those, those monies don't go into the fund balance or the sheriff's office. Those monies collected were from judgments, i.e. from writ of executions, people suing each other, so. But a lot, a lot of folks don't realize that we do generate income. Over a page, I just submit examples of the simple, the different types of civil process we serve. I'm going to hit on that, just for your reading pleasure. Over another pa, another page, under supporting professional regulation, under civil, we had 266 court sessions. I remember when I first started 26 years ago, we had about four a month, that's it. Four a month. Now, we're, we're almost having court daily and sometimes two and three courts daily, or yes, daily. And those 50,703 items scanned through their x-ray machines. Over another one, you can see here, new concealed handgun permits, 317. And now this, those monies are, some of those funds do come to us, correct, Ms. Laurie? Oh, you don't have one, I'm sorry. I didn't make enough. I'm sorry, new concealed handguns, handgun renewals, and you'll see the walk-ins, calls at the detention center, and how many fingerprints we did. Over one more, the Investigation Unit, that's headed up by Captain Derek Jones and Lieutenant Lee Tritt. We're, we're fully staffed in the Investigation Division as well. And you can flip over the next one, two, three pages are the different entities within investigations, i.e. general investigations, that's your property crime, and you can see the total cases, search warrants, court orders, traffic stop, et cetera. And then what's very interesting is the narcotics. In '24, we almost seized 13 pounds of methamphetamine. That's substantial. And actually, I invited Commissioner Breeden to sit in on a command staff just recently, and we almost got that on one traffic stop here recently. So I mean, we're absolutely, I'd match up our guys, whether it patrol or investigation, to anybody across the state, just to say the least. But to put all this in perspective, I mean, Barry, you can, you can relate, and you can really tell these guys, you know, really explain to these guys, we did 108 search warrants in 2024. That's two a week. That's ridiculous. I mean, Barry, I'm sure you can attest to that. 555 interviews, that's 10 a week. These guys are really kicking their tail. Also, on the narcotic summary there, almost three-quarters of a pound of fentanyl. And I didn't do a, an annual report the previous year, but we had almost four pounds out of one, one bus, so I'll compo, compile all those numbers for you if you wish. Where we are to date, K-9 unit, all the stats, the tracks, the vehicle searches, room searches. I know we're called to various counties. I know Swain County don't have any K-9, so we go to their schools, especially since we have our vape detection dog. We go over to the FedEx warehouse over in Briston City as well. So we work well with all our surrounding agencies and really assist them a lot. Attention Unit, that unit is headed up by Captain Daniel Crane and Lieutenant Anissa Over one more page, this is the, the monies that are, the revenues that are generated by the detention center. Commissary, that's Kimball's and Skillet. NCIC is telephone service. SMCP is statewide misdemeanor confinement program, and then jail and clerk fees downstairs. So we were able to generate $109,153. That goes into the general fund, from my understanding. Yes, it does. Yeah, I mean, you guys front us the money, and then we ultimately just pay it back. And then you'll see some staff awards. Our SRO unit now, our SRO, SRO unit is headed up by Captain Greg Rogers and Sergeant Troy Byrd. '24, all of our schools were completely covered, which is absolutely a great thing. That's pretty much it in that nutshell. I'll let you guys just thumb through it at your own pleasure. But as a sheriff, it's both my duty and responsibility to stand before you and advocate on behalf of the men and women of the Macon County Sheriff's Office. One of the most pressing concerns I continue to hear from the staff is the issue of pay, specifically regarding the pay scale and how is it applied? I respectfully urge the board to consider moving forward to a system where employees have play, are placed on an appropriate pay scale based on their actual years of service, rather than be prorated, and I'm guilty of that as well. If an employee has 20 years of experience, I think they deserve to be compensated for 20 years in the scale. Anything less is a disservice to their dedication that they, and that they bring to the agency. I've got a few examples. Derek Jones, 20 years of service, he's on a pay, a pay scale of 12, where he shouldn't be at a 20. Jonathan Taylor, 14 years of service, he's at a six. Adam Wishon, he just, he's 28 years of service, and he's at a 14. He'd have to work an additional 17 years to reach the top pay, and that's 45 years with the sheriff's office. I appreciate your time and consideration. Appreciate you. Any questions?
You had some officers retire.
We did, yes, sir.
What happened to those positions or the funds when those officers retired? Do you immediately replace them, or does someone else move up and you have vacancies there? How does that work?
I guess it really depends on which, you know, we had Scott Nelson retire from SRO. I can't afford to fund his position right now at Martram. I hate to say that publicly, but I've got to wait till July, and he's going to come back at part-time, not necessarily under that purview as a SRO, but he's going to come back part-time.
But when the funds, when the funds are allocated for that position and that, that individual retires, the funds are there. What happens to those funds that you're not paying that officer?
It rolls into the general fund. If they're unused at the end of the year, they roll into the general fund. Yes, sir.
In comparison to your other counties within this region, haywise, I think you said you're talking about somebody with 28 years and they're being paid on a 14th year.
Yes, sir. I can tell you, Jackson County, Jackson County is very comparable, as so is Transylvania. They're both comparable. You think Franklin Highlands, Silva, Cashers, Vavar, Talks Away, about the same size agency, population, everything, and we're behind an eight ball, big time. And thank you for the pay plan. Maybe that's the answer is the pay, you know, the pay plans, the study, the pay study. Maybe that's, maybe that's the answer.
I'd just like to know, make sure that we're in competition in a compatible manner with everybody else, that we're not being paid low, and you know, that we're, that our region is respectful.
We're behind an eight ball.
Compared to all those surrounding counties?
I wouldn't say all. I mean, like Graham County, Clay County, they're super small, so I don't think you can compare those to us. But like Jackson and Transylvania, and maybe even in Haywood, you know, we're definitely behind them, definitely. The Tribe, Franklin Police, or Highlands Police Department? You kidding me, Highlands Police Department?
Let me ask you one other question. What is the incentive for a person to be in law enforcement? Is it just service?
Yes, sir.
I can respect that, because teachers in the same situation. It's tough, kids, gotta eat supper.
I try. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right. Update report for the Broadband Committee. Macon County Broadband Consultant, Jeff Lee.
Good evening.
Good, Jeff.
Once, I haven't been before y'all since probably September of last year, or maybe even earlier than that. But so, a lot has been happening in the county. We've had a lot of good progress. There's a common theme with the providers, they're all experiencing a little bit of being overwhelmed from all the construction that's taken place. A lot of them were hit by Helene, so they're experiencing some delays. Some of them had to do repair work and recovery work in areas around Asheville and that type of thing. Not all of them did, but a lot of them were impacted indirectly, trying to get poles changed out. There was a power pole shortage. There was just getting permits done through National Forest Service and from the power companies, it's been tough. So it's, it's impacted them all, and it's causing things to take longer than, than we would all like it to. But things are happening, so that's a good thing. We've got, we've got several ongoing grant programs, and a lot of you have seen construction around the county. Josh knows about it full well, because his place over on 441 is full of stuff, always going in and going out there. And then we have some other projects, other providers that are, that are working on expansion of their own. We have a new CAB grant that was just awarded in March, and so we're going to talk about that a little bit. We kicked off a project for Cowie School, for public Wi-Fi at Cowie School last fall, so I'm going to give you an update there and talk a little bit about future grant programs, and is there any more money available and what's going to happen? Because there's still a lot of people that aren't covered, that won't benefit from, from the grant programs that are already in progress. Frontier was awarded a grant through the GREAT program, the North Carolina GREAT program. And that was awarded back in 2023, and it was a $3.8 million grant, over $4 million project. And I'm sure for most of them, the costs have been rising, so the, the total cost of these projects has continued to go up, but they're continuing to work within, and get reimbursed for the grant monies that they were awarded. They finished their engineering and permitting. They've, they've spent the first year working on two wire centers in different parts of the county, and they began their construction for the fiber last fall. And so we've seen a lot of trucks go in and out. Their biggest contractor is ITG, and they have a lot of smaller subcontractors as well. So they're putting things up on poles as well as putting things underground. And we just, most of their activity has been north of Franklin for the past several months, and we just started seeing a lot of activity to the south, around Otto and south of Otto. So, so they're working all over the county, but there's still a lot of material staged on the, at the facilities on 441, so we know there's still a lot of work in progress. I'm hearing that they're anticipating starting to connect homes and businesses in the June timeframe, and they'll be working through the end of the year to get homes connected. That particular project is going to serve 2,700 locations around the county, and they plan to also pick up other locations that they pass along the way that may not have been grant locations. And how much of that they do, we have to wait and see unfortunately. Balsam West was another recipient of a GREAT grant. They had about a $1 million grant, $1.2 million project, and this was to serve parts of Otto and Scaly Mountain and unincorporated Highlands area. And once again, their engineering and permitting, the thing that has been delaying them the longest, is finally complete. They began construction in Otto about a month ago, and they've just started their, or are just starting up in Scaly Mountain, and anticipate to have their first 30 or so locations ready for activation in Otto area, probably within the next few weeks. They also worked on a project for us that they finished up last July in Nantahela, and we connected five county facilities for public Wi-Fi, fire departments, rec center, EMS. And they have continued developing along that fiber path that, that was constructed. And so they, to date, they've connected 42 residences and three built businesses. So, so they are continuing to work there around the county in other parts, other than Nantahela, with the South Macon project that we worked with them on back in 2020 and 2021. They're now serving 96 businesses along 441 and in town, and then residential fiber mainly in the South Macon area, about 176 locations. This particular grant that they got, the GREAT grant, will actually build on that project that we did earlier. So it'll use that fiber that was developed earlier to help serve these other locations. We are still waiting on Charter Communications. Charter received a, an award through the FCC from a fund called ARDOF, or Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. And they are supposed to serve 80, over 8,100 locations in Macon County, which represents about a $9 million subsidy for them. And unfortunately, we don't see them at all building yet in the county. They are building over in Jackson County and Haywood County, but they haven't made it to Macon yet. And I, until today, I hadn't heard anything from Charter. I got an email at 4:30 today from one of the Charter folks that said they're working to build out their commitments in Jackson and before they move into Macon, and they're anticipating to move in after the first of the year, so early 2026. I'm from Missouri, literally, so I'll believe it when I, when I see them actually get here. But I'm sure that they will get here. The, the future, the program's kind of uncertain right now. It is a program that's administered by FCC. There's a lot of changes in Washington, as we all have been watching on the news. There's new leadership at the FCC, so it's unclear what's going to happen with the ARDOF program, and whether they're going to allow some of the providers that haven't completed in certain areas to default on those locations or, or to get excused. We're just going to wait, have to wait and see. We are hopeful that they will begin deployment, and I had written by the end of the year, but they're telling me now it's going to be after, after the first of the year. The most recent grant award that we got was through a program called CAB with the state of North Carolina. We got a CAB grant award through Balsam West last year, but that particular agreement with Balsam West and the state fell through. And so we went into round two, and Frontier got an award in round two, and that was awarded in March of this year. It's for, it's a $2.3 million grant, $3.4 million project. And the good thing about it is that with CAB round two, there were no county match funds required. So we were able to return all the funds that we had allocated or designated for that back, back into the, not, so it wouldn't have to be used for match. It's going to serve 411 homes and businesses, and that's going to be in the Sanders Town area. So like Balsam West grant, building off of the South Macon project that we did, this CAB grant for Frontier will actually build off of work that they're doing now for the GREAT grant. So they're building fiber nearby the Sanders Town area, and so this will extend that into Sanders Town and help develop that area. The CAB grant has to be completed, or is supposed to be completed by the end of 2026, based on the way, where those funds are coming from. Cowie School. Cowie School is a award location that's, that's targeted to get fiber under the Frontier GREAT grant. And we're hoping to get that fiber connected to the school within the next couple of months. And of course, that's the largest anchor institution that's in the Cowie area, and it, you know, it impacts the county. It's countywide, people, people go there for concerts, for all different types of People go there for concerts, for all different types of events. And so we started looking at that last fall to take advantage of the fact that the fiber was going to get to the school. What they have in, the infrastructure they have in the school was really not adequate for serving public Wi-Fi. And so utilizing a grant from Southwestern Commission that was actually funded by Dogwood and some leftover funds that we have from the Nantahala project, we're working to upgrade their network infrastructures that when the fiber gets there, we'll be able to light up public Wi-Fi and serve that like we are in some of the other facilities we own in the county. And we feel that's going to have a great impact, not only for public Wi-Fi aspect, but also it will enable them to create some educational programs, digital education programs, so take advantage of their mission to serve the community. There are future broadband grants on the horizon. North Carolina, state of North Carolina is planning to continue, and it's in the budget for next year, or it will be in the budget for next year when they ever complete the budget. They'll continue the GREAT and CAB grant programs. But the funding for these programs is supposed to come from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. There was a $42.5 billion chunk of that money that was carved out for a program called BEAD, and it's administered by the NTIA, which is a federal agency. And the grants would then be awarded by the state. So all that $42.5 million is supposed to be allocated to each state, and then the states issue the grants. As we know with a lot of the other federal agencies, there are changes happening to the leadership at NTIA, and the current administration's already asking for changes to some of the funding for the BEAD program. So we're not sure what's going to happen with that. The impact could be minor. They could make minor program changes. It could be significant. They could take the whole fund off the table. So we just don't know what's going to happen. So this is impacting state broadband offices around the country. Everybody's on hold to see what happens with those funds. The funds were legislated by Congress to serve, you know, to expand rural broadband, and so we would hate to see that lost. But right now, all we can do is wait and see what happens in Washington. So depending on what happens there, it may impact the ability for us to fund any more broadband programs in the county through those programs. So just to give you an idea, and Derek liked this particular slide. He liked, this is a good summary of the different broadband projects that we've had going on. Some of these are completed. Were completed earlier this year or will be completed this year, and some of them have yet to happen. But it gives you an idea of what kind of size, what kind of impact these projects have within the county. Without going through the numbers here, I'll leave that to you all. Any questions?
What kind of, let me put the name here. Is it Starlink?
Starlink?
Starlink.
Yeah, there's a lot of-
Where's this picture at in our competition?
So Starlink is a satellite service, and I have Starlink personally. There's a lot of folks in Macon County that have Starlink. Anybody who is in an area that Charter is supposed to serve someday, the only solution is if you can't get Frontier DSL is to use a satellite service. The problem with Starlink at the moment is Starlink is sold out in our area, so you can't, we looked at actually getting a Starlink terminal for Cowie School in the interim or waiting on fiber, but it's just not available in our area because not enough satellites, not enough ground stations to support the demand. A part of that is due to Helene, because a lot of people who are impacted by Helene in Asheville and surrounding areas turn to Starlink and, you know, to get some type of internet service. So we expect that'll improve over time. But Starlink's an option for some folks if you have clear sky view. It isn't allowed under certain grant programs right now. That is one of the things that could change with the BEAD program is they could allow Starlink if they can actually, you know, provide service. But so it's available outside our area right now, but not to any new folks within Macon County.
Due to the Nantahala situation, I hear a lot about positive things about Starlink.
For those that already have it, yeah, it's been, it's been great. It's dramatically different than having DSL. But once again, for those that are looking for a solution right now, it's just not available in our area. So that'll change over time, but that's just what's the situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right, moving along. 10B, old business. Discussion regarding Panther Drive and Porter Creek intersection.
Mr. Chairman, the NC DOT is going to require a redesign of that intersection there, Porter Street and Panther Drive, which is the main intersection of the high schools. But the NC DOT does make the requirement. It is a school project. All of that's reimbursable from DOT. We have to do the work. We'll do it through the school contract, but we have to actually do the work and then get reimbursement from them. But they cover it all the way from the design and survey all the way through to the construction part, so we have an estimate on the surveying part. So tonight, I'm asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, I need to amend the contractual agreement with LS3P to do the design work for the Porter Street Panther Drive intersection associated budget amendment internally to show the revenue increase from the NC DOT in the expense of $11,750 for the survey.
Correct.
And that's just for surveying?
That's just for the surveying part. Once the surveying part's done, we'll get a design on the intersection. That'll go out to BEAD through, we'll probably go through Carol Daniel to do the construction part. We'll go out to BEAD, they'll get the pricing on that, and then we'll submit all that stuff to DOT.
All right.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that the Panther Drive and Porter Street intersection in regard to the redesign of $11,750.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, that's five old, Ms. Tammy. All right, easy enough. 11A, new business. Discussion and approval of the updated resolution for the Macon County Fire and Rescue Commission. Fire and Rescue Commission Chairman Dustin Pendergrass. Welcome, Mr. Pendergrass.
Dustin.
I got on the agenda twice tonight.
Lucky you.
So should have before you there a copy of the resolution. Best we can figure, the last time that it was updated was 1989. We've seen a lot of changes since then with the Fire Rescue Service in Macon County, and they voted me in as chair about two and a half years ago, and we decided to start looking at some of the improvements and updates that we could do to some of our forms. And I appreciate Eric for taking a look at this also with us. If you go through there, the highlighted sections of what we're looking to change, the board is comprised of the 11 fire departments chief and typically assistant chief from each fire department, emergency management, the local forest service, fire marshal. Sheriff's Department has been listed on there before, but at no point was the local police department's Highlands PD or Franklin PD was not listed on there. And the way it was established several years ago was the emergency management coordinator would serve as the vice chair of that, and the secretary of the emergency management office would serve as a secretary for us. And we greatly appreciate Jimmy and Kim for doing that, and they've kind of requested to be able to step back and let that be handled from our, from the board of the chiefs and assistant chiefs. So we've changed the wording around on that to where the vice chair would be elected, just like myself, on a yearly basis, same thing as a secretary. If we get a, when we get a secretary in there, they're probably going to be stuck with that position for a while. Also through there, the Fire and Rescue Executive Committee, we've been meeting. It's not, it's informal. We're not a board, so there's no minutes or anything that can be taken during that. But we've been having a lot of discussion on the routes and avenues to take the fire service in the future. And we broke that down to, and it's nothing against our assistant chiefs or anything, but to bring that down to 11 members, it's 11 fire chiefs. And we've been getting together about once every other month and just having discussions on where we need to go and what we can do for the future, and letting the fire service be a, you know, a good positive voice, the fire commission, to come to you all if you've got questions about what's going on with the fire service in Macon County, is not having to solely, you know, rely on emergency management for updates. You know, if you want us to come speak, present anything that's involving the Fire and Rescue Service in Macon County, we want to be here. We want to be involved. And I think this will help that with this committee. If you flip over to the last page, there's not a lot of information that we've added in there yet. Basically, wanting your approval, support with this is to potentially have a nonprofit organization developed from this board, so we can, we could raise funds, we can do anything to assist the fire service in Macon County. As it stands right now, this resolution is between us and you all, and we're not an organization that can raise funds or anything like that. Those are the changes. We're open to suggestions, anything else that we need to do with that. We're on board. We just, we want to make sure that we're that positive voice to answer questions for the Fire Rescue Service moving forward.
All right. And Eric, you reviewed the contract. That's good.
We're good.
Very well done.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated resolution for the Macon County Fire and Rescue Commission.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Antoine.
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, five old, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you all very much.
All right. And 11B, new business. Discussion and consideration of funding for a fire safety trailer for the Macon County Fire and Rescue Commission.
Never a fun topic to come in here and be asking for money, especially for the amount of money that we could potentially be looking at here for this fire safety trailer. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, two and a half years ago, when I took on the role as chairman, we began really looking hard at this fire safety trailer. Macon County had one for several years. That was, I guess, probably six years, five or six years ago now. It was, we had to get rid of it. It was beyond repair for a short period of time. It was stored at Cowie Fire Department until we ran out of room, and then it was stored outside. And it just, it had lived its life. It was probably mid-'90s maybe when that was purchased, and I believe that was through donation funds and a donor in the county willing to match funds that was raised. That time, that was handled through the Macon County Firefighters Association, which that group has disbanded in recent years. This trailer here, like I said, it is an expense. We don't take this lightly. We didn't just throw something together and try to come in here and ask for these funds. I think that the children, I truly feel that the children in Macon County benefit greatly from this trailer. I have so many stories from previous. I worked several years with the old trailer. I got to go through it as a teenager and then ended up getting to run the trailer at several events. I have several stories I can share with you at any time. Kids have still come running up today and remember getting to go through that trailer and what they've learned from that trailer. We can sit, fire departments go to schools throughout the county during Fire Prevention Week, and we give a presentation, you know, we may spray water, we show them the air packs, we show them all the equipment. But then when it comes to discussing how to safely get out of your home if it was to catch on fire and things to look for if your home's on fire, it's just telling them, it's looking at videos. Myself, I'm a hands-on person, and I think our, I think our children deserve to have this hands-on demonstration to work through with our fire safety program. In the past, it was ran by, this fire department would call, request it, they would come pick it up, they would use it and bring it back. What we're looking at here would be a team, much like if anybody's familiar with Jackson County, they have a fire life safety team. Excellent, excellent program. If you're not familiar with it, I would be more than happy to get you contact information. They go all around their county multiple times, not just Fire Prevention Week, and they work with their kids. They have a huge, huge program, and it's a nonprofit organization that they've developed so they can take in donations and stuff like that to help fund that. Obviously, the big expense is getting this, hopefully getting this trailer here. So, you know, with that, we can develop a team, and I've got several, a few of them here tonight, that are willing to jump at the opportunity to run this program. And we have several fire departments that don't have a school in their district. Cowie, for example. I don't have a school in my district. We've worked alongside Burnin Town ever since the new aisle of school was built, and to be honest with you, the couple of days that we get to go there and do fire prevention, in my opinion, is not enough. I wish we could be doing more. So with something like this, any event, festival in town, if they're willing to allow us to be there, this team's going to have that trailer there. You know, we can set up and run at any of these events. I get at least one phone call every year from someone from the Macon County Fair Board wanting to know if we have our new trailer yet so we can get back to the Macon County Fair. Last couple of years, Jackson County's been kind enough to come over and set theirs up. During that time, they've been limited because most of their folks, they have a full-time job. They have, you know, they have stuff, other obligations. So during the time that it's been set up at the fair, it's not been open the entire time that kids have been there. You know, we go that route, we're going to make sure that that is staffed Wednesday through Saturday or Sunday of the fair. Like I said, any large event where there's a gathering of children, you know, we want to be there, we want to be involved, and we want to teach fire safety to these kids. I'll go through this with you a little bit. So there, this option is all the bells and whistles. We are open to any sort of discussion with this, but I do feel very strongly that as much of this as we could get would be ideal. This is a 34-foot trailer. Comes equipped with a kitchen area, fully operated, simulated kitchen, same for the bedroom, an industrial room, I'll talk more about that in just a few minutes, and also a pre-training and briefing room where you can have three of- have three or, three to four different groups going through at one time. And that's given an opportunity to sit down and explain what all will be going on as they go through the different rooms of the trailer. Does come equipped with three axles, it's 36-inch by 8-inch hinged doors that will also come with ramps so that it is ADA compliant. The base package with this is basically just getting the trailer with none of the big add-ons. It's $234,500. The add-ons, if you all chose to fund all of those, you're looking at an additional Plus a delivery price and a training price. If, if delivery, if pickup was available and we could go pick it up and cut that out, absolutely. But the, the training side of it is an excellent, excellent program. And obviously, we don't want to get something and not hope, not know how to operate it. So as you go through, and I'm on page four, the severe weather package, I think that that's a must. And look at what we've, what we went through last several years and it seems to be increasing yearly. Hurricane weather, emergency simulation, tornado, weather emergency, flood, and earthquake. Our old trailer had that, obviously, but that was with mid 90s technology. This, they actually come in and they will simulate like it's WLOS or one of the local weather stations. So when you're watching the video, they're giving weather updates for Macon County, Colosseia Community, Cowie Community. They, they can set that up to where it's actually more real life and based on, on, on Macon County. The interactive over stove cabinet will simulate a fire. Same thing with the, with the microwave. It does, it comes with a interactive extinguisher and to watch it work. If you've had, if you've not had the chance, I would request to try to get, get through and go through Jackson County's. Because it's, it's as realistic as I've seen when it comes to just simulating a fire and extinguishing the fire. The bedroom scenario, you have the heated and smoke door, smoking electrical outlet, smoke detector with alarm, and then additional props can be added. And a lot of these props is stuff that we could, we could fund ourselves. In the bedroom, also in the bedroom area, you have the integrated trash can fire prop. That's one of those, you know, we, we would like to see it, but, you know, we understand some areas we may have to, to look at further. Sparking, burning wall mounted air conditioning prop. There's still several of those out there. The industrial room, this was something that we had a lot of discussion about. Do we, do we want to consider this? Do we leave this section out and not utilize this room in the trailer? As far as this, it would just be a larger training room for adverse weather. You could bring the, bring children in, adults in, and work in this area versus setting it up as industrial. I, I do know for what, what industry that we have here, some of their insurance companies or their, any of their business plan, you know, if they can put their employees through this, we're, we're going to, we would set it up and run it for their, for their employees. It has a lockout-tagout system, propane cylinder, a leaking gas, chemical drum prop, interchangeable Moving on to page eight, so that does, does include the wheelchair accessibility. And there's an option for camera and wireless video display package where you can, folks standing outside could watch what's going on on the inside if we felt that was necessary. It does include generator, basic lighting, additional upgrades. And again, here's something that we could potentially look at locally. This bid is to do a full custom wrap is $25,000. Or you could do a full, full colored logo of a design that we developed for the county. It would be on three sides of the trailer and do that for a little over $5,000. Electric tongue jack, trailer mounted spare tire, aluminum wheels, some of that stuff, we could probably work around. Full trailer insulation, I think that would be a must. And adding the awning as well. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions with this and I'll be, I'll be happy to answer those. Said, the, the total for this would be, if we've all, all add-ons, plus the shipping and the onsite training, you're looking at $342,135. I know that that is a lot, but I also think that our children deserve that. We can also use this for young adults, adults. With our old trailer, I took it to the annual Cowie Community Club meeting every year. And there would be a lot of our retirees, the summertime residents, go through that trailer every year, you know, and seem to learn something new every year about how to get out of the house or what to check for, you know, in the event of an emergency or fire in their house. And like I said, that, that trailer was not, was not designed to withstand beyond 20, 25 years that we got out of it. Also, I didn't mention, this has a, a simulation for 911. So teaching children the proper way, you know, to call 911. I believe the old one had a, had a rotary and none of the children today would know how to use, how to use that phone. We'll have to see if there's a simulated cell phone that we can put in the house. So feel free to ask, ask away, because I'm sure there's a lot.
The fire ground, about three or four years ago, you had, had one out there. And I was able to go through it. I felt awful crunched.
That was Jackson County's, and I don't know the exact, but I want to say it's around a 30, 30 feet. Now, this is 30, 34. Again, and I don't know exact numbers from, from them, I'd be more than happy to reach out to them and get, get the exact figures. But yes, these, these trailers, they're not like your, all of your campers. You see now, there's no slides or anything like that on these. It is a...
Maybe you had to go out the window back there.
Yeah.
Go out the window.
It's eight foot, six inches wide approximately with a exterior height of 11 feet. And we'll, the trailer will weigh 11,000 pounds.
How long have y'all been without the old one?
I would say at least six years, probably longer.
Has Jackson been bringing theirs over since then or?
They have brought it over to the, to the fair. And I'm, any of the other, like Safe Kids events and stuff like that, they may have. Our big thing with Fire Prevention Week, and if it was up to me, we'd have Fire Prevention Month, you know, and spend as much time with these kids as possible. But if you try to, you know, during, anytime during Fire Prevention Week, Jackson County has their own children, you know, to be visiting with and, and, and training. So at that point, for the last several years, I can't speak forever, department, but myself and Burnin Town, when we go to Iowa, you know, we're, we're in the gym with them and giving presentations, tell them about what to do, but we don't have the visual aid to show them. I do understand this is an expensive visual aid, but I, I do think it's worth it. I can tell you one, one story, and I don't want to get on a kick, guys in the back row will tell y'all, I'll talk all night. This is just one, one case for, for myself. Several years ago, we had a structural fire in the Oak Grove community. We pulled up on scene, it was a pretty chaotic scene, got the fire extinguished pretty quick. And as I was walking back to probably grab a bottle of water, a child that lived in the home come running up to me, remembered me and told me that he knew where his meeting place was when the house caught on fire. And he, he picked that up from us training him through, at that, at that time, we probably did have him at, at Cowie, when Cowie School was still open. I did try to reach out, I thought that'd be nice to, to have that story, but that family's, which he's, he's grown up now and out of college and has, has moved away. That's just one story. I'm sure we could have countless stories of the kids knowing how to properly dial 911, when to dial 911, not, not misuse of 911.
All right. Couple, just a couple of real quick questions. The, just looking at that warranty, 10-year warranty on that, is there an option when you're setting something on fire a year, doesn't seem like a long time for those add-ons? Is there an option to go farther? What's the longevity of these trailers? You know, what, what are we, what are we expecting? Does the county have a place to park this thing? It's going to be outside the weather? You know, where, can you just address a couple of those real quick?
I definitely think that it would need to be kept in the dry. At, at one point, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Scaly, but I, at one point, we had a conversation and maybe if they had room there, if, if another fire department had, had room to store it, because it, it does not need to be out in the weather. With that, I think it would be a metal building, covered carport to park it under. With that, it would be asking if county has a place for that or do we need to look at a, at a fire station that has a flat piece of property that could park this truck on? That, that's definitely a, something that we have discussed, but we just, we don't know where yet. But definitely, in, in my opinion, it needs to be kept, kept in the dry unless it's out being used, just, just like your camper. What was the other, it's all simulation fire, so there, there's no actual, no actual fire inside of it. So I, I would think if, if we do our part to keep that thing clean, dry, in shape, ready to go, I think it's going to last us for a long time.
What is the timeframe when you order it and you get it, then all of a sudden you're, you've got another building you have to find or to?
I think, I had a discussion with the sales rep on the build time. And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. I want to say, I would say in the neighborhood, six, six to eight months. But I will certainly nail that down for you on, on build time if we chose to move forward.
And the storage area would be, it's got to be, right? I mean, it's not an option.
I, I think a carport, obviously at least a 36, 38-foot, probably a 40, 40-foot carport. We haven't got prices or anything on that yet. I know I'm, you know, I don't want, because I'm chief of Cowie as well, but I, I could find a place there. There's 10 other fire departments that deserve that. It doesn't have to sit there, but I think we could find somewhere unless there was an area at the county where it could be, could be housed.
All right, I guess it's my time to, as someone that retired from the fire service, I used the other trailer in Highlands. It was brought up there, the kids looked at it. It was, it was a great experience for them. But out of the two times that we used it up there that I remember, it come and went. So, and I don't know what the cost of, of that other trailer was, but when you're talking about $342,000 of taxpayers' monies for something that is not going to put out a fire, it's not going to help Cowie Fire Department, it's not going to help Highlands Fire Department. It is something for fire safety for the kids to go in and see and this experience. So my question is, when, as a liaison to the fire commission, when we started talking about this, I said, yeah, I think the kids would really enjoy that in Macon County, until I started getting numbers on this. And it was like it choked me to death, $342,000 for a trailer that, number one, it's a tri-axle, got to have CDLs to pull it. This, with all this high-tech stuff, not everybody can go get that trailer and use it. So you're going to have to dedicate certain people to this unit to take it from point A to point B. And I, I'm sorry, I think it's a, I think it's an overkill. And certainly, I know the kids enjoyed it, but I just don't know that, that I could sell it to my constituents at $342,000. Because I've already been contacted and I don't know how some of these people heard about this. But they weren't real happy, so.
And well, and that little group is never going to be happy.
Well, I understand.
And with that though, ISO rating. We get points, each fire department gets points for community risk reduction. So every five years when we do our inspection, they come in and see what percentage of your population have you reached with some sort of education, fire prevention, community risk reduction. With this, if we take it to any, any fire department that we, any area in the county that we take it to, they can turn around when ISO, when OSFM comes in to do their inspection and show that 300 kids, 500 kids, plus their parents, you know, and anybody that came through this trailer will help benefit. They're going to learn the proper techniques and then at the same time, the, the fire departments can, can work through that and hopefully get points towards their ISO. And another thing that I've pulled, just, just looking at some small numbers, and this is, I'm not trying to jump away from the trailer, but this is to show what the fire service has done so far with ISO rating. Town of Franklin is a 3/4, Highlands is a 4/4, and that's inside city, outside city. Clark's Chapel Auto, Burnin Town Colosseia are a Class 4, West Macon Class 5, Cowie's a Class 3, Sky Valley, Nana Hala, and Mountain Valley are all Class 5s. So when you factor in, and this was just one study that I pulled of, of a home valued at, at $318,000, with any of our rates in there, the, obviously the savings vary just a little bit. But without the fire department or with the fire department that just wanted to be at the bare minimum, based on, this came from one, one insurance agency, they'd be paying $1,407 annually for an insurance premium. With the fire service, with, let's say with a Class 5, that drops that down to $969 a year from this one company. Class 3, it drops down to $958. Class 4, I'm sorry, Class 5, $978. And then, of course, each fire department has its own tax rate and you plug in what, what they, what they would pay the fire department in fire tax and still show their savings there. So again, this is not, this is not where the money's going to come from if y'all choose to move forward. But what the ISO rating has done and the fire department's choosing to better theirselves, and I'm going to use Cowie because I'm familiar with our budget inside and out. ISO Class 3 at a .078 tax rate. $318,000 home in my community, they could get insurance for $958. State savings, $449. That's below what, if we were just bare minimum fire department, that's the savings that we've got for them. This person is going to pay Cowie Fire Department in fire tax payment annually of $248.04. That's still a $200 savings a year that they're putting in their pocket. And it may not seem like a lot from one home. Cowie Fire Department has 1,493 structures, and I can't tell you if they all have insurance, pay insurance. and I can't tell you if they all have insurance, pay insurance.
Well, for time purposes, in respect of the meeting right here, we are in budget discussions, and we've got a lot of different items for discussion. And just out of respect for everyone in here tonight, I want to kind of move on a little bit. Does anybody have any action they want to take at this moment?
I'd like to study this.
Yep, I wouldn't mind to study it, and I feel like it's, it's very informative. And Mr. Penegras, I actually went through the Jackson County van this summer at the fair this fall. So give us a little time to digest this.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not in any rush. We just, I think it's, I think it's necessary.
I see something here. It says expiration date 7/31/25. What does that mean?
I would say once a year they'll, they do a cost increase.
That's the quote?
Yeah, this is just a quote, so.
The quote expires on 7/30.
So if you go beyond that, it probably increased, you don't know.
I think it's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penegras. All right. New business, item C, discussion regarding Sheriff's Department vehicle request. Mr. Cave and Sheriff Holbrooks.
Mr. Chairman, you remember my budget presentation? I told you that we did not budget any patrol vehicles in the Pago capital this year. During the budget planning process, Sheriff's Department reached out to one of the state contract vendors, get the pricing, and obviously they were informed that the pricing would go up after July 1st. But the other issue they were running into, they were concerned about the shortage of equipment that was available, so they wanted to try and go ahead and get an order in so they could be in line to get some vehicles at a decent cost with the uncertainty of the pricing at the moment. However, as a local government, we can't issue an order to purchase something until the funds are actually established somewhere. So our suggestion was if that's the case, and we were gonna, I was gonna put the six vehicles into the Pago capital budget in my proposal. If we want to go that route, the, the solution is to go ahead and approve the, the funding. We can pull it from fund balance and move it over to the Sheriff's Department vehicle expense. They want to do six vehicles, five Ford Explorers and one Ford F-150. The five Explorers are $38,858 apiece. The F-150 is $45,760.70. So if you add those together, the total for those six vehicles that would have been included into Pago capital line item of my proposal is $240,051. So if you're so inclined to go ahead and do that, and you will notice my Pago capital was significantly less than what it was last year, taking those out. We'd need the okay to go ahead and move the money from fund balance to, to issue the purchase order to have that, make that purchase.
So essentially you're asking Rust to pull from fund balance, buy the vehicles, and when the budget passes, we get reimbursed?
No, the, the capital, the Pago capital was decreased. I decreased the amount that I pulled out of the capital. It will roll over into next fiscal year because they won't get them by July 1st. But we have to have the funds appropriated because we legally can't issue the purchase order until we have the funds set aside.
Okay.
What was the cost again?
$240,051, and that was, that was the amount that was actually quoted in the amount that I was gonna plug into my budget proposal.
Do those vehicles go out for bid?
It's the Insurance Association program. You don't have to put them out for bid.
But can you put them out for bid, or is that?
There's no way you're gonna make that.
Okay.
We've had some pretty good success, particularly with this one vendor. They've been pretty consistent. When we need something, we don't have to wait several months to get one, so.
All right.
Your vehicles, you're not requesting these, just to be requested they're in need, right?
Yes, sir.
And typically in a Pago capital line item, we typically did six cars every year anyway, or six vehicles every year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the vehicle request. Six total vehicles for $240,051 from the general fund balance.
Second. Here a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Can you oppose? Tammy, please let the record reflect 5-0. All right, item D, consideration and approval of public records request. HR and Safety Director, Ms. Tammy Keiser.
In your budget packet, you had a copy of a draft process for public records request. This is a process that we've been taking care of for years, but have never had a written protocol for how to handle the public records request. So we felt like that due to the increase in requests and the frequency of them, that we needed to have something in writing to make sure that we are following the general statutes and the process consistently, tracking those, and making sure that folks are getting their records. So this is just a standard procedure, basically of what we've been doing, and it complies with the general statute. Attorney Rodenhour and I have reviewed it, discussed it, and it includes a electronic request that we will put on our website, where folks will go to the website to actually request the records. They can still request those by email or regular mail as well. But having that electronic format on the website will expedite and make it easier for folks to request records. We've also included a fee schedule, which is allowable under the general statute for anything that requires significant research or duplication of records. So I just need your approval for that process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tammy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the public records request process as presented.
All right, here a motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Can you oppose? All right, Tammy, 5-0 for the record book. All right, new business, item E, update from Burnetown, I O. Fire and Rescue. Chairman Mike Yax.
First off, I want to thank, thank everybody for the opportunity to provide you with an operational update from our department. Just to give you a little bit of history, this goes back to July of last year, at which point during our 9S inspection, we were found delinquent in filing our quarterly fire reports to the state. We were behind on, on quite a few. And also our membership status had fallen below the state requirement of 19 members. Like we were one shy at that point, so we were put on probation and subsequently, Cowie Fire and Rescue has assisted in all the calls that we were making since then. That situation was rectified, and I guess I should back up a little bit. We got in that situation because of some internal changes. We had some turnover of our command staff, as well as our paid full-time facilities manager that took on a lot of these duties, left our, our department, and left us in a pretty rough spot. So it took a while, and Chief Blanton worked diligently to get our reports up to date. It took us, well, better part of six months. By the end of December, December 28th of last year, we were caught up with all delinquent reports, and we had also got our roster level back up to 19 members at that point, which also had the training hour, hours required to be a member, which is 36 hours a year. So we've been working, working hard on that, and we're now at a point where our quarterly call reports are being submitted to the state, and we continue to do so. Our current membership is at 22. We've got training programs in place to keep those people up at a level of 36 hours or better per year. And, you know, we're still facing, right now we're at 22, we're only a few members short of, like any department, if we fall under 19, you've got a problem. And we're constantly battling attrition as members age out. And then the other side of that battle is the fact that there's very little interest from the young members of our communities. So, you know, recruitment is an ongoing battle. And not to get off topic, but something like that smoke trailer helps kids get interested in the fire service, and something to think about in the future with that. But what I can say now is, you know, we are working to do better. We know there's a possibility that we could fall below that 19-member threshold. And as a department, we're at the point right now where we're open to combining efforts with an adjoining department if need be, to keep the service level up for our community. I mean, that's what it all boils down to, is servicing, you know, the health and welfare of our community residents, as well as protecting their properties and, and structures. So with that, you know, all, all I can really say now is, you know, we've got up to that point, leave it up to the board as to how we should proceed. But what we'd like to have is at least a couple extra months before possibly being inspected again. We've had monthly inspections from Jimmy Tean, and we'd like to continue to do so. And in the meantime, work on building our roster, as well as the training level of all of our volunteers. With, with that, you know, I'm, I'm open to any, any questions or, or comments.
Are your 22 members, are they actual firefighters, or are they just names on the roster?
No, well, they are, our training levels are up. I believe we're all 22, correct, or? Okay. So no.
Are the 22 members, does that include junior firemen?
No, well, juniors aren't considered firefighters until they're 18.
Correct. Okay. So you have 22 members plus?
Yeah, we've got, what have we got, two, three juniors, three, or four?
I am aware of a lot of the inspections, and in fact, I was out there for an inspection, and I've had a lot of communications with, with fire marshal and stuff like that. And to be honest with you, it's serious business. You know, we as a Board of Commissioners are hiring you guys as subcontractors to provide a service to the citizens of your district. And any type of failure by you and your department puts all of us on the hook. Okay? So as these inspections, I don't think that anyone is, is looking at these inspections as trying to give Burnetown Fire Department a hard time or anything like that. It's just we have to know that the services that the taxpayers are paying for are provided. And, and so I have to rely on the, you know, the inspections team to give us feedback as to what they find. And so, whatever questions that anyone else have, but I would like to hear from the fire marshal on what the latest inspection showed us and, and everything else. Because I, I'm not gonna get into details, but I've heard a lot of horror stories about this process, and it's very concerning.
Okay.
Okay. And, and I think the reports show some of the things that I have great concern in this board and the county as a whole should have, so.
Oh, absolutely. That's understandable.
Jimmy, would you?
One thing I think that they are, 18 with 36 hours training.
Okay.
So I've got a packet here for y'all. This is our inspection.
Is that for the county, or is that just for?
This is for Burnetown.
So like, we started inspection in July, and it was, it was reported to us that Burnetown had fallen below the minimum requirements of 19 members with 36 hours of training. And they have to have 15 members for the main station, they have to have four members for the substation. And also we had a couple of the first-out engines, they didn't pass pump tests. We resolved that by taking those offline, putting those in as tankers, and using their tankers as engines, which they all passed pump tests. So, and everything was going pretty good, and, and we, we done a follow-up inspection in December, and that revealed fire reports had not been submitted to the state, and that membership had once again failed, failed below the required 19. And given the ongoing staffing shortfall, we are considering allowing Cowie Fire and Rescue to respond to the medical calls. We already put Cowie on, on fire calls. So when they went under de-staffing again, then we was trying to ensure the medical calls too and get all calls. So Cowie has been responding with them on all calls. Then in a letter that's dated January 2nd, Burnetown failed to respond to a medical call on Lower Burnetown, and I've got the incident number listed here. And as a result of this non-response, we informed Burnetown, instead of considering them, we were going to bring Cowie in and, and have them to go to all calls. And then in February 18th, later February 18th, regarding a structure fire on McGahay Road, Burnetown responded automatic aid to Cowie, but failed to provide an apparatus, which is a 1,000-gallon tanker. They didn't take one of those. I think they had one member there. And that was a violation of Section 2 of the contract. And then on a follow-up inspection in April, we found again that the quarterly reports had still not been submitted to the state, and that there was 38 reports that was incomplete in emergency reporting. And there was also in that same month, another non-response to a medical call on Olive Hill Road. And I have all those incidents listed on here, and the letters on it.
Did you respond to some of those?
I was gonna say, there was another side to those.
There's a couple non-responses on that. We did not get pagers. None of our medical people got those notifications. I do not think you can be expected to respond to a call when the pager doesn't go off. So in both of those instances, we did. Our communications in Burnetown, the radio system is lousy. Don't believe me, come right around. I've got a couple recorded on my pager. It has been lousy. It's not gotten any better. We spent bunches of money on wiper systems and stuff a couple of years, several years ago. Still having problems with it. There are places you cannot communicate, you can't call, you have to go back to the old 450. Both of those instances, none of our medical people got a call. The tanker instance, I was the one person that responded to that. Cowie's commander on scene at that time, 10:22 that call on the radio. We could not communicate, I could not communicate on wiper from that location. I told our tanker to stand by, it was 10:22. Mike Roper was leaving Station 1 with a tanker. I got it, I got it on our private radio. We don't have good service there. But I got it on our private channel, and I canceled that tanker. So it was response, and even though it responded, even though it didn't- So it was response and even though it responded, even though it did not come to those three instances, I can address. One other thing that was cited in one of those reports, and that was that our pump operator, who's our newly hired person, could not get water out of squat. We had one page down Carson Code as a structure fire. It was a vehicle fire, an F-150 truck. I was the commander on the scene. Truck was pulled in there, one four responded to that too. They pulled a hose, they pulled a two-hundred-foot pre-connect, spoke it about over six and a half feet, took about seventy-five feet to get to the fire from that rather than pulling a hundred feet on the front bumper. The truck, when I got on the truck, because we weren't getting water, had a hundred-and-twenty-five pounds pressure on the gauge and I noticed we'd got hose keys. Have you ever spolded a garden hose up to stop the flow of water? Most of you have. Well, that's what we had. And as soon as that hose was stretched out, we had water. It was a fully involved vehicle, F-150 aluminum body, it was on the ground. I tried to explain that to our fire marshal, no response. So that's included in his reports. But he did not talk to us about any of those concerns he had before he wrote it up. So I want you to be aware that there's a lot of things, I've done this for a long time. I can go to any fire, that any fire department gets called out in this county and I can pick it apart because it's a chaotic scene. Have you heard that mentioned? It's going to be a chaotic scene. There's going to be a lot of people running around, there's going to be some confusion, things are going to be done that shouldn't be done and some mistakes are going to be made. There was nothing to say on that fire. That truck was on the ground. So, you know, you feel like we're not serving our community, but we are. And we had good response and we had people there and we took care of them. But there are things that are going to happen on a fire scene and it doesn't matter which one it is. Those of you that have experience and have done this understand what I'm talking about. So just to address your concerns that was in that report, I think you need to know the other side of this.
So why haven't these, the quarterly fire reports been submitted to the state?
Well, we had one person at that time that was responsible for doing that. Our facilities manager was also a firefighter and that was one of his jobs, as well as a former chief. To put it bluntly, we had kind of a mess internally, especially when they left. They left a lot of things undone, which nobody else was aware of until the inspection. But normally, fire reports are done after a call. They're done online, submitted to the state and it's done at that point. It's something you can do.
Whose job is that?
From the desk. Right now, it's, well, since then, it's become the job of the highest-ranking officer on that particular scene.
Give me a title, position. I feel like, where does the buck stop? You know, I feel like there's a lot of kind of hot potatoes right here, like ultimately...
Well, it's usually anyone...
Is it the chief? Is it the board of directors?
Well, to do those reports, it's anybody, anyone from a sergeant to lieutenant, captain, on up to the assistant chiefs.
So who would be responsible for getting all these caught back up?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, whoever was on that scene, a person cannot write a report if they weren't there. You can't write a narrative on what happened just out of thin air. You know, it's somebody that's got to be, somebody that was physically there and can confirm what happened on that scene, which is what the state is looking for, a summary and what personnel were there, what apparatus were on scene, what type of incident it was and so on, whether it's medical or fire, of course.
So is there no way to get these thirty-eight reports caught up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've pieced those together. I've worked on some this morning. I was guilty of a few myself due to medical circumstances, which nobody else could finish up until I was back in action. So there was a handful there, but...
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So originally, the state put you in violation in the nine-S inspection, correct?
No.
Jimmy?
And filling those reports out is a requirement from OSF to keep your nine-S rating. If you don't send those reports in quarterly, you get dinged. And I think maybe what you were asking is, emergency reporting is a system that all the fire departments put their reports in and that, I wrote it down right, Chad, he looked at, there was thirty-eight reports for this past quarter that hadn't been put into the emergency reporting to be sent to the state.
So like...
Those are being worked on.
Why, is there a timeframe that those are supposed to be done?
Quarterly.
Just have to be done within that quarter? Doesn't have to be certain time after the fire?
Yeah. I did several this morning, calls that I was on weeks ago.
And that's one thing that we look at. We look at nine-S standards, OSFM standards to make sure that they're good, plus we also look at viola contract, our contract.
So do you take notes on what happened? How do you recall what happened two months ago?
Well, that's part of the reason they should be done as quickly as possible after the call. It's usually mental notes and going back and checking our emergency dispatch to see refresher on who checked in route, who checked out scene, all that goes into the report.
To the point I wanted to make is, who oversees that? Who comes in after the incident and says, "Did you fill out your report?" That's the question I'm asking.
All reports go to the chief.
The chief is the one who's supposed to make sure that's supposed to happen?
Yeah, anybody that can do a report, the chief is the only one that can finalize the report before it's sent off to the state.
I feel like, just speaking personally here, if everything's going good, we don't have a packet, we don't get called into closed session and we're not getting emails about no responses. I mean, at the end of the day, we can all make excuses, but the fact is, it's not being done. And so I just feel like if we're not getting packets and not getting called into closed session, then we're not talking about this right now. So I just feel like, what do we do? How do we fix this? How do we get more attendance? What do we do here? I mean, I just feel like the people, the people of Iowa need...
How many calls has Calwe been on? Total?
Assisting Burnington?
Since when? December? February?
December of last year.
And they're also paged out first or at the same time?
Directly paged out first.
Okay, two Burningtons.
Is there any compensation for Calwe for doing that?
No.
I'm with the chairman at this point, like what, the question on the table is, what needs to get done to get this fixed and why hasn't it been fixed already?
Well, it's in process, as of today, the membership level is up. We may not have all reports done for the quarter, but those are in process.
Well, when does the state say we've had enough? That you're not fulfilling your duties to that community, you're no longer a...
That would be a question, does the state notify you if...
No, we would notify the state.
Then they just tell you, until you get up to a certain level again, we'll reopen you or they can just, how does that work? Because I believe we had some fire departments that had manpower number problems and they were closing them down. Is that right?
And what we do is, we try to handle this before the state gets involved. And that's why we do an inspection once a month to meet the standards. And I think in the contract it says, no lower than a seven or no higher than a seven, protection by seven. So we look at that, we look at the trucks, but if we find something wrong, then we determine whether we need to put them on probation or what action we need to take. And if it gets to a point and with your decision and all, then that's when I would have to contact the state.
When do you anticipate not having Calwe as the first out on your calls? Because Calwe's doing this, I mean, all the men and women of Calwe Fire District have stepped up to the plate to provide a service for a department in their district that can't provide that service. And they can't continue to run a hundred calls, I mean, with no compensation?
I think another question is, is do you have any historical data on how many members you have? Like is that, what's that trend? Is it staying around nineteen? Is it twenty-two and then it goes down to fifteen? Is, you know, what does that look like over the last several years?
Generally been in the mid-twenty range. But again, with attrition and people do come and go, we get a lot of new members that, you know, I've been there thirteen years and I've seen quite a few leave within a three-year period. There's quite a bit of turnover, but unfortunately, new recruits are kind of hard to come by these days. And what it's all leading to is, you know, eventually we're probably going to have to combine efforts and our department's open to doing that. If we ever drop below again, we're not opposed to working with an adjoining department.
But that was my next question then. What efforts have been made to work with other successful departments in Macon County to make sure that this can get fixed?
We've actually discussed it, our department has discussed this for going back a couple years. I've even talked with Warren probably two years ago or more about what the future looks like, just because we know eventually there's not going to be enough volunteers and attrition is going to take over the newcomers, you know, so...
What is the delay in possibly joining forces with Calwe? Well, I mean, it's my understanding, Calwe Fire Department has a ton of members and it seems like you guys are spinning your wheels, worried to death about all this stuff. And as a firefighter, all I wanted to do was go to the scene and do what I was paged to do. End of story, no more. So it seems like if they're responding to your calls already and if you guys could do it on your own to join forces, this is just a statement question to, it seems like it would be a win for both departments and your fire district.
I think eventually it's inevitable.
Right. And so why would we delay it when we know that it is something that's going to happen?
I think at this point, we really, nobody's real certain what that's going to look like. And I think it requires further discussion and investigation, you know? I mean, how do you do something like that? And how does that affect the tax base in each community or does it? You know, Burnington, Iowa community members have bought and paid for all of our equipment.
I understand. I mean, but it's still that same equipment is providing that service for your people that bought it.
Yeah.
So it's not...
Yeah, they don't care who shows up. You're right.
It's just going to take, it's going to change the face of the two departments as to how you guys work together, join forces and combine all the assets.
I agree. That's something, you know, we'd like to look at in greater depth.
Because my only concern is, you as a service provider for fire and medical is, your sole purpose really is to protect lives and property.
Exactly.
And my concern is, I was always on the end of a hose. I did an interior fire attack, okay? I wanted to make sure whoever was at that truck could get me water before I entered that building. And not only is it concerning for your citizens in your district, but also you as firefighters. Because the concern is your safety as much as it is, because if you're not safe on the scene, you can't save somebody else. And so I hope, I hope you guys can have an open conversation between the two departments and come up with some type of agreement, how this, and work together and leave us... Look, I left Fire Department in Highlands because of the political. When the government got involved, it changed the whole outlook of the fire service in Macon County. The politics in it, it just went haywire. I had my time, I said, "I'm done." Because most of the time when the government gets involved in something, it don't normally work out very well. And in my opinion, it has caused a lot of issues with the fire departments in Macon County. And it's all about tax dollars and you've got those connections and everything. And I wish the fire service would have never gone to the tax base in Macon County. As a Highlands firefighter, I understood it. We didn't need for anything. If we needed a new pumper, put it in the paper, two months, we would have the money. We knew the other departments didn't have that luxury. We were the last department to join the tax base in Macon County. And it has changed the face of fire service in Macon County and not necessarily for the benefit.
Well, I can tell you, that's something we will certainly look at and like you said, open communications and figure out what it's going to look like if we were to go that route and take it from there.
I think, Herrmann, can I add something? So, I tend to be a numbers person. So worst-case scenario, usually what happens with an inspection, the notice is given that the contract can terminate after so many months. That's the standard notice that's given with, when you do an inspection. So you have met the contractual obligations of your contract, you can terminate when you want to. Now, I'm not advocating for that. That's a severe process you have to go through. There's assets to be considered. That's not an easy process. If there's another solution to make everybody reasonably confident and happy, I think that's a good option to pursue. You can extend time on the process to allow people to address whatever concerns you may have. The one thing I would suggest for their behalf and for your behalf is, if you do that, I would set a date. I would, you know, come back to our work session, come back to the next meeting in June, come back to first meeting in July, whatever the board thinks is sufficient, just so that people know this, we have a timeframe to work with. It's not going to be tomorrow, we're not, something's not going to happen tomorrow unexpectedly. It's not going to be three years. Set a timeframe that's reasonable for everybody involved to have that discussion back here.
Where is the county liability piece within this?
It would be shared essentially because you are contracting them to provide a service and the contract specifies not less than a Class Seven protection within the five miles, not less than a Class Nine within the six miles. So if, if that's not provided by one of the contractors, then yes, that falls back to you because you're employing them to do a job essentially that you're paying for with a service fee. So there would be some implied responsibility back to you in some way, form or fashion. Obviously, the first responsibility would be to them, the first concern would be back to them as the contractor.
And that's, and especially if we know there's a problem and we don't address it. And I appreciate what Mr. McCaskill said about not receiving the pages and stuff like that, but if this, if something severely happened, would they use that in court to say, "Well, we didn't get the page?" Or would they say, "No, the 911 call center paged it out and there was no response"? How, I mean, it seems to me like the records are with the center, not with a firefighter or a responder that didn't get a page. So realistically, I think it would all fall back on to the records of what actually happened at the 911 center.
Mr. Segal is actually sitting back there with communication system. He's trying to stay hidden back there. he's trying to stay hidden back there, but, I mean, do you wanna add anything to what he just said as far as the responsibility for that?
Keith's got some more of a point that, that we are geographically challenged, um, we have to drive radio systems. Um, we know that. We do provide, uh, secondary means of getting electronic, you refer to dispatches. Uh, we provide that as a free service to the firemen. We also send a text message. Both of those are now recognized by OSFM as a secondary means of receiving their pages. Um, I, I don't, knowing that there's issues, I still don't know that all nineteen or however many departments have on roster would have not gotten a page.
So you used to get a second page if you didn't get a response within a certain amount of time. And what is not doing is, most people at night, if things were at night, don't sleep with a pager on open where they listen to Highlands and Cowee and Franklin and all the calls that go out. I don't. Wake me up, I'm awake. All this gray beard and the age, I guess, a little bit, but when you disturb me at two AM, I'm not gonna go back to sleep until five when it was somebody else. I depend on the phone. I've told them on dispatch, on the radio, on open air, I did have service, page it again. We've got the phone and stack. I picked it up off my phone.
So it goes-
Page it a second time. Were they not reasonable about that?
It goes back to the timing. How much time do you need? Dustin, how much time do y'all need? How much to communicate, to work this thing out? I mean, we're going into, uh, a new fiscal year here, uh, before too long and, uh, we need to try to get this thing-
I think realistically, a couple of months if, if, if that would work for the board.
Jimmy?
So you need a couple of months for Cowee to cover your calls?
No, no, no. I meant to, uh, have a discussion as to how it could work.
I, I think what I, I think I hear what you're saying is that you need to come here and tell us what the plan is in combining these two fire departments.
Yeah.
And just tell them what it is, if it can be-
Yeah, right now, we can cover our calls. I mean, we've, we've got the staff. Cowee's still running, but, uh, you know, we, uh, we have the roster up and the personnel, so.
But in July, if you could come, I'm just using that month, come and tell us, this is how we're operating now. We've combined X, Y, Z and, uh, we are providing the service to both the Burning Town, all the fire and rescue department and, uh, Burn, the, the others.
How we are.
Yeah, Cowee, how you've combined that and not us telling you to combine it, just say, "This is the way we're operating now." If you can operate that away, that's fine. If you can't, I think real world stuff has to come in. If you can't, if you can't do it, if you don't have the manpower, what it may be, just have to say it.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be the issue. I, I think, you know, what we'd have to look at is how exactly it's, it's going to work, uh-
Yeah, just bring us a plan.
Yeah.
So are there any plans to stop Cowee from responding to Burning Town since they say their numbers are up? They have-
When the eight months were, uh, verbally told them that, until I heard from you all that we was going to keep sending Cowee to these calls. So I'm kinda relying on you to kinda guide me on this, whether or not to or not.
Right now, it's additional unnecessary resources.
But the two brainpowers of the two, of the two organizations should come together and say, "This is how we have to operate down here. Bring that operation procedure to us and we yea or nay it."
Okay.
My first concern is the, the citizens, the safety. If we say by the July meeting, can you guys come until July, are there gonna be any missed calls?
No. I certainly hope not. Like I said, our roster is, is back up now and, uh, you know, there, there shouldn't be any reason for a missed call other than if the communication is there.
Communication's there. Again, when you don't get the call, Danny, it's, there's no, I'm not just gonna by osmosis jump up and run a call somewhere and not have any idea where I'm going or what's going on. I don't care if the pager didn't go off.
I mean, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. It's 2025. I mean, they've been paging for the past forty years. Seventy million dollar budget, somebody has to be able to figure this out internally. And, uh, don't take us the wrong way and we appreciate your volunteerism and, and what you guys do. And I know there's a pride thing in the communities and there is in every community. And I live in Otto, but I feel like this board has a fiduciary responsibility to provide fire service to the people. And the fact is, we're having missed calls. And I think that's why we're standing here right now. And we're just trying to sift through the pieces and how to figure this out. And the fact is, if we weren't missing the calls and we weren't on probation, we wouldn't be having this conversation. You know what I mean? And I feel like I'm looking for the, where the buck stops and I still haven't found that guy that's gonna take all the responsibility. Like, I still don't know who that guy is. And I think that's who I'm looking for. Where's, where does the buck stop? And, uh-
So we need that guy and we need a final solution. Like, what is a solution to this and what is a timeframe on it?
And I think that you, you said it yourself, that it's inevitable.
Oh, yeah.
So if that's, if it's inevitable to join-
It's inevitable with every department in the county.
So if your, your goal is to join, say with Cowee because they're, they're helping you, how long is that, how long is that gonna take? You know, cause for us to terminate your contract, I mean, that's, that's very difficult to do. It's not a good thing.
Yeah, we don't wanna see that.
Throw in, throw in there about, if, if you terminate the contract, if the contract gets terminated, uh, they have a real good chance that that district would go to a protection by ten. If, if they were to combine with the neighboring department, that rating that Burning Town right now has will stay the protection by four for a period of time until OSFM comes in and re-inspects the whole.
So how do you combine? How, how do you do that? Do the two boards need to meet together and decide that they're gonna do that?
It would be best if those two departments-
So can y'all facilitate that and get your boards together and figure it out?
Quick question. Why hasn't it been done yet? Is there a reason? Is there-
We've never been to this point before.
I don't, I don't agree that we go two months, three months, whatever. We're talking about property and lives here. And if it's inevitable, then let's do Wednesday hour, um, when are we recessing?
Your work session will be May twenty-second at nine AM, which is a week from Thursday. And then your next regular board meeting will be June the tenth at six PM.
In my mind, this is critical. This is very important. It's urgent. This is urgent. They are running calls in your district with no funding and they're doing it out of their service to the community because all of, everybody that serves in it for the protection of property and its citizens. So we would much rather, or I, as my vote, would much rather you two or your two departments get together, hash this thing out, see what the picture looks like, come up with an agreement and come back to us and say, "We've got it finalized" and let's, and let's, I mean-
Dustin, what's your, what's your, uh, input in this?
I just wanted to add, Mike and I have had a handful of conversations over the last eight months with that open invite that I'm, I'm willing to come talk to their, to their board. Um, I, I understand and, and get the respect of this. I, I'll work alongside with, with their members any day of the week. You know, I, I'm sure there's been hard feelings and upset and everything else. I did not get into this to, to take over a fire department. If this is gonna happen, you know, we're, we're looking at a merge. Um, I'm, I'm bringing sixty-five firemen to the table. I've got thirty of them that's certified. I've got twelve paramedics. I've got thirty-two EMT basics. I'm willing to bring that to the table and, and merge and, and make one fire department. Um, my recommendation from me being, doing the budget for my fire department, um, if this was to happen, you're talking about one tax rate. There's a seven-eight-two minus seven-eight-oh. I would want a budget in place before July one. Um, you know, because we gotta start July one with a new budget.
So which means then you guys gotta come to an agreement really quickly here.
I'm, I'm willing to sit down any, any time with their, with their-
Can you guys do that by me, by the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Then I make a motion, we, you know, set this off at the twenty-second.
And they come in for the work session and tell us, uh-
Okay.
Yep. And, uh- Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, consent agenda.
We don't need to-
Motion dies for lack of second. All right. We're doing a motion, consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden and second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion?
Didn't we do this change down here on this cool receptions to?
Yep.
To, uh, to party by design, yes, sir.
Party by design?
All right, no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Can you oppose? All right, Ms. Tammy, please let the record reflect five oh. No appointments? Uh, any closed session?
I don't have any, I don't think.
No closed session, need a motion to recess until May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
On the clock.
Nine AM?
Nine AM.
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner Breeden. Second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Recession.